I'll call March 20 of 2019 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order at 7:01. And attendants are Supervisor Day, Marsh, Snyder, and Torres. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Township Engineer Pete Kaczelski.
Kaczelski?
Glenn Kelch.
Glenn. Glenn Kelch. And Pete Eisenbrand is our other... Oh, there it is. Pete Eisenbrand, our Chief Engineer. Thank you, Pete. Historical Commission Chair Paul Legassi, Township Manager Joan McLaw, and Assistant Township Manager Jeff Eastburn. And Secretary Sharon Norris, and the Mayor Shane Warren. Morgan was Ellen Kohler is in attendance. And there are approximately five members of the public. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One announcement, there will be an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss our legal issues. Okay, we're down to public comment. Public comment for anything relating to items on tonight's agenda. The last public comment is for items not on tonight's agenda. It is important that you state your name clearly for the tape, so your comments can be reflected accurately. Please state whether you're a township resident or a township tax payer. And I'll say that we have a small group tonight, so if we have public comments on a particular issue, I'll make those comments during the discussion after the supervisor discusses. So you can hold your comments to that point. If you don't want to, you can make them right now. Here, a minute. Okay. Nancy, you're up.
I make a motion to approve the February 27, 2019, version two meeting minutes as presented by the Township Secretary. I second that. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Motion carries back to the floor.
So I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2019-08 regarding disposition of records for this Board of Supervisors meeting on February 27, 2019.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
David, you want to do the next one? These reading glasses are not working.
A lot of numbers.
Yeah, it's a lot of numbers.
Okay, so we're down to the Treasurers' Report.
Yeah.
I make a motion that the Board through the February Treasurers' Report, which includes the following disbursements: General Fund with disbursements and transfers of $147,611.37. Partnering Rec Fund with disbursements of $1,775.38. The Open Space Fund with disbursements of $6,553.17. Capital Reserve Fund with disbursements of $9,298. And Fire Hybrid Fund with disbursements of $588.29. Leaving a balance in all funds totaling $626,052.29. Do I have a second?
One second.
One second.
John.
John actually goes the loudest of the two seconds that I heard. John seconded it. Is there... Put him down as third. Any discussion on the matter?
No, could be.
That's okay.
In that case, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next is the zoning officer's report.
Okay, February Zions Officer's Report on Motion Aids Department's Issues of Five. Building inspections, twenty-six. Building fees collected, $354. Recreation, open space, impact fees collected, zero. Miscellaneous fees collected, $1,450. Three zoning issues recorded. That's it. And...
Do you want to just...
Yeah.
Okay. 206 Fox Pond Road, that's the house that was... had been condemned and sold. And has since been torn down to the foundation. And they were... Took it to the debt. They were out there with the crew when they were taking it down.
They turned the whole house down.
Yeah, they're able to use the foundation. So they're working on that. He said it took six forty-yard dumpsters.
Yeah.
Gary had... was an experience.
It's nice to see our community people are committed to continuing to invest in it.
Yeah, and he showed, I think Jeff and I, a rendition of motion plans to build that's really going to be a nice looking house.
It's a nice number.
The original house was decent. It was really decent, but it just, the guy just let it run down the mountains.
3327 Adams Road, we were in District, or not District, was it Corticombe?
Yes.
Best suite in Westchester. Were the judge to hear the case regarding the fees, he appealed the fees that were assessed by the district judge. So we're waiting for a decision on that. You haven't heard yet, right?
That's correct. There is their timeframe, but we need to stay separate.
Okay, 1620 in London Road. The owner of that property actually was in the office today... no, yesterday, Tuesday, talking to Jeff Vogels. Jeff was helping him with the conditional use that he needs to... that he is resubmitting. So he's working on that. And he's working on having the property surveyed so he knows where the boundaries are as far as what they're concerned.
But Jenna, I'm confused. So here, because you're saying it has to submit again, the paper for Jeff's said application for a rise condition use was submitted, so...
Well, it was not, but again, it wasn't right. So Jeff gave me paperwork and said you have to fill it out this way. So he had some more questions, so he gave them to Jeff again to help me answer the questions.
Yeah, so maybe we can correct that.
That's pretty correct, yes. And Jeff has told him that he has to get in as soon as possible, so he's working on that.
Can I ask you a question related to this subject regarding dissection to the point? Let's go back a little bit. Excuse me, just a thought. We sent a letter submitted to PADP on 7/20/18 for extension of pump and haul plan. According to somewhere, I can't find it.
It's in the front.
It's in the front? We haven't heard. Then we also sent a letter on January 7th from AECOM regarding a violation letter. And we haven't got anything back from them. Should we just let it go until they respond? Or should we follow up with either a letter or phone call?
We... I mean, Sandy stays on top of that. And we submitted the permit application, and it's... it can only be pump and haul until the facility is built. So I can ask her to try and adapt my agenda. It's not going to... yeah, it's not going to go.
DDP knows what's going on. We hear anything that may lead to legal issues. And I think they're probably the same point we are. It's not much that we need to do.
Yeah, it's just been eight months since we made a request of extension. I know there's no other option.
Yeah, if you go after them, they may say, okay, let's put you guys to it. And put some more pressure on us, and we don't really want the... It's really the builder has to do their job.
Right.
I mean, they're continuing to pump and haul, so it's important.
Exactly right.
There's no option except he builds the storage.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for DDP to wake up one of these days coming back and say, okay, what's been happening? But they get their updates... We have to submit updates every quarter anyway.
Yes.
They can answer those, but they don't have to.
Our offer of practice is this just came in. It's a review that they've done on the latest submission.
So it's called some saving?
Some saving.
That's pages?
It's a hundred and twenty hours.
Thirteen pages.
Yeah. So unless I'm stupid, thank you. Do you want to?
So the four guys, right?
Yeah, so the PC did not meet in March, and the HARB did not meet in March. Anything you want, sure.
Right. No, actually, last Thursday in London Road, we were the co-sponsors, and actually a little more than the co-sponsors, since I gave the talk on preserving family stories, doing oral history on your smartphone. And this is a very practical how-to, few ways of using your smartphone to record conversations with friends and relatives about events that matter to you. And using the appropriate app to both record and to share with other people. If anybody that's interested in the topic, we have a few. You're here on the table with the other handout, left over handout. It's very much a detailed presentation. It's all the presentation you should be able to study as well. That is what anybody else is surprised.
They all have their smartphones in front of them to put them together?
A couple did. I also had one woman who never had a cellphone, so was nonetheless interestedly following the whole talk in the back of the handout. Like I said, I was lucky I didn't play with it. It was a slightly smaller turnout than we usually have, if you understand.
Joe, is there anything on the PC agenda for next week? So it's likely we're going to cancel that meeting?
Unless there's something that...
Something would have to come in that didn't bring any due time.
Right, it'd have to be like...
The conditional use is what could be on the next PC agenda.
If it's submitted by... when's the date, the calendar date? I have to get my calendar. It's not this Friday, it's next Friday.
Yeah, so the meeting's the week after next.
So we need two Fridays before... two weeks before the meeting.
So it'd have to be tomorrow, or it can't go on.
Well, that's what plans, not necessarily conditional use.
Okay, so then we still have time to get a meeting.
Yes.
So you could still get a PC meeting.
If Jason gets his conditional use, then yes.
I'll do the next one.
Let me start the next one here. No motion, we don't need a motion for this. Township should have two representatives for the Adam Grove Library Board. So recently, when Lisa Zawada volunteered for that position. Lisa is here this evening. Shelley McCoy was their only representative. Shelley's been here a couple of times talking about library issues. Mrs. Zawada will introduce herself to the board and answer any questions the board may have. So we're not going to hurt you here. We appreciate your offer for community service. Sincerely appreciated. I know your husband, Mark, is also involved in community service. He appreciates what we get from the family, so thank you.
Thanks. So Lisa Zawada, I currently work for the Adam Grove School District at Penn London Elementary, and I supervise the library. So I thought that it would be a nice go-hand-in-hand to offer the community service to the Adam Grove Public Library. I used that library many times when my children were younger for the story times and just events that they had. And I think it's important to have members of the community and not obviously representing the library and farming up the needs of the library so that we can support them, we can better support them.
Does the library have a silent option coming up?
They have something, I think it's a fundraiser. Well, I know it's a fundraiser, and I don't know if they're technically calling it a silent option. And I'm not sure, there was a discussion at the last meeting about how they were going to advertise that. But I believe it's March 30th or 31st.
Okay.
Yeah, just for the record, we're one of the townships that fully fund the libraries. So we appreciate your service. Any other questions, please? We've always had two representatives, so it's not unusual.
Yeah, just to kind of... we know that you guys are constantly looking to reinvent yourself and we're in a couple of old times, and the technology, and we appreciate that. Because the more we get our kids involved in reading and interacting in that way, the better. And of course, it's not just for kids, too. It's for all sorts of adults as well.
And I think it really supports people who are at walking distance, not necessarily from here, but people who have families who can walk to the library in the Westbrook community.
It's a great location, and it really stays busy. It's great to see.
Was there any major 2019 initiatives for the library that you heard?
Not that I'm aware of, so...
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't have to stay the whole week.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Do we need a motion for that?
Says no motion needed.
No motion needed, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for volunteering here. Okay, David, I'm going to take this.
Okay, so we're down to... I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2019-09, issuing a hunting license to the Franklin Sportsman's Association for the 2019-2020 season. Seconded by Stephen. Any discussion? Any... I guess there's no reps of the...
They don't usually have to come after this.
No, they don't.
They're actually done with all regular meetings now.
Right, but they come more often than not. Okay. In that case, if there's no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Next is 5C. I make motion that the Board of Supervisors accept Ethan Shuplin's plan to build a bridge to connect the Keen Trail to the Wyndermare Open Space and fund this project up to the cost of...
He's going to tell us.
All right, so we'll just hold the motion for discussion.
Well, good evening, everybody. How are you?
How are you, David?
As the agenda mentions, I am vengeful to the Board to fund a major project to make a bridge from the...
Ethan, you live in the township, right? Down in Southfield State?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
As the agenda mentions, this will be on the southwest corner of the Wyndermare community. On the most southwest corner. After that, I'm actually marked for everybody, so thanks for that, man. We've been told that this...
Oh, you've got it flagged down here. I was up there many, many years ago. We walked up here to see it. It's not a really formidable obstacle, but you do need the bridge to get across.
Yeah, definitely. We're actually just told that this trail is a basement. Actual property of the Wyndermare here.
It's the Wyndermare.
So I'm the head president, my head president is my name. So can I speak up like Ethan?
Go ahead.
So we really appreciate everything you've been doing here. Really, the goal here is to connect the Keen Trail that was always planned of being connected with our neighborhood as part of this connection. As part of the construction of the neighborhood by Wilkinson, the bridges that were constructed, we were to... they were constructed trail, a motive trail basically. Now, we're to construct the trail. We don't think that meets the terminology to construct, but the bottom line is we are left with a trail that's incomplete and a Keen Trail that's adjacent to our property, the H.O.A. property. And we're like the helping in constructing trail. But as previous board meetings, as you guys have promised, we're committed to funds, to funding material for such bridge. And Ethan's done a lot of work to put together some plans. And we've worked with Paul Overton, you know, and looking at some of the other bridge, trail groups and how they can construct it to help put together plans with that even. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The actual specifications of the bridge is that'll be 46 feet long and four foot four and a half wide, and over two strings. That's on the dam at that side. And they said that we built on the pavement trail. And this is meant for the actual public, not just the people of community. And just to kind of keep you guys in mind as the actual beneficiary of this project, the... It actually turns the wider people with the official engineering drawing. We were... I actually provided this by Mr. Overton. And that is actually checked up by a registered engineer. And we did have to change the specifications on some of the materials, mostly due to availability at the time. So I think one page before that drawing, there's actually a... we rendered that down, just kind of, possibly. Showing that this would be made of two 20-foot bridges. And then there's actually one six-foot stretch to close that gap. And then I'll actually put on the... I'm on the between the two strings.
Does one of them doesn't need a handrail or a guardrail? Because you should have one with a...
Yeah, those more created constraint on time, like...
Okay, so they both need a handrail, right?
Yeah, the two 20-foot stretches. I don't think that the six-foot stretch will need...
If you want to continue, it's only because that island, the hill, was not a whole lot going along.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of how high the walking surface is above the load point. So if it's less than 27 inches, then, you know...
They're suggesting basically two of the bridges over 173 sheet, which would include the grounds.
Okay.
And then it's basically two streams that we're crossing, and then an island. The island would be the short six-foot piece there, which might not necessarily need a railing, because it's on top of grade, but the other, you know, drop...
The other one's down more than 27 inches.
It might not be, but it's close enough that we recommend that we prefer to have a handrail installed.
The only reason I asked is because the one figure didn't show it till the post-attachment.
Yeah.
I was wondering if it's showing on time on...
Oh, that's fine. You answered the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
If the actual railing is 42 inches tall, that would be made of four by six upwards. And that would be topped by a two by six.
Okay, well, a key item on this hang... on the guardrail is the attachment to the lower part of the bridge. That needs to be very secure.
Yeah, that would be secured by...
We're architecting this, calling the design as to cover the architect for both bridges.
Okay.
And those would be hanging carriage bolts.
That's fine. Because the handrail has to carry a... has to be able to resist the 200-pound force at the top rail, which that should easily do that.
If you use bolts that attach it. The project is actually changed from a stone to concrete kind of idea on the original project to actually... several days, and also provided by Mr. Overton, which I'm red foot wide and one of the banks. And we're going to have to actually like... that kind of cut, some of that out. But we should... might be able to do that though with hands on shovels. Not really going to need all the machinery that they already have.
This is a pretty ambitious project. How long is it going to take you to do this?
Actually, we have a lot of people like that. We've got a... I would treat me some of their brothers, so actually the...
Each of us is also going to help out volunteers from the neighborhood. They'll help out.
So we got a lot of people.
Do you build the pieces first? I don't know. You build them first, then you come together?
No, we'll construct the flares first. Put the flares in, and then put the joists across the flare footer, and then pop it in together.
You'd have to build it in place, because it'd be too heavy to move.
We figured that it would be one day for prep work as far as putting the flares in, and one day we'd actually build the bridge. Once it gets thrown, it would be relatively quick.
So just a couple of comments on my part. First of all, thank you very much. It's very well organized. Paul Overton is a saint in terms of he's been looking at this for a long time. I'm so glad you two have gotten together, and you guys are there to support each other. I went over there today, and I do think that... So this is fantastic. I have no problems with it. It's hard to get up on that first bridge. It's an amazingly well-built bridge, and I see someone's put some paperwork here.
Yeah, I passed it out, can't see.
You're talking about the other bridge?
Yes. And I'm sorry, but the reason I'm including them both because I think there's probably not a ton of value in doing one part without the other part.
Well, I got an email from Paul a couple of days ago, and he suggested the same thing. I responded to him, asking him his idea to utilize the labor, the volunteers that are already out there.
I'll get up the people.
And he said yes. So anyway, I passed it out this morning from Joan. He's requesting about $1,500 to get the... If you can see the bridge, which is about 150 feet away from where Ethan is looking to do his work, and Ethan at Owl, if you want to go agree with his work. There's two... he wants to build a ramp to that other bridge. So as you can see from the two pictures that follow, Pete got one, and I have it actually as well.
Ethan, have you seen a...
Have you heard from another about that?
Yeah. Yeah. That's not... I mean, if you look at it, that's not really safe.
It's brutal. I tried to climb up there. Probably half the people in the room couldn't climb up on that bridge. It's just really steep and dangerous, yeah.
Yeah. The issue we've got here is they're... the property, the one on Wyndermare, property and the legal responsibility belongs to Wyndermare. Mike, I think you had already checked with your insurance company.
Yes, we're...
And they're okay with what you're doing.
Yes.
But this one's on our property.
Well, it's probably more dangerous as is. I will say that.
Well, I think we still need to run it by our insurance agent, which I did have a conversation with him in early March about the Pam Sharp Bridge, but I didn't know about this one.
Yeah, so...
Well, how... can I ask you, how was this constructed? Who constructed it?
So Paul... It's incredibly well constructed. I think he got money from the township, but it wasn't enough to do ramps. And they had to construct it high because things flood. It's extremely well done. My view is if we're going to get your horsepower to help make this happen, we should do both. Now, water under the bridge, rule of business should have paid for all this. It's embarrassing and ridiculous. But here we are, so let's make the best of it. We have a community interest. I think it's extremely dangerous as it is. I think it's crazy.
There's another reason.
Maybe, yeah. They just used... they did as much as they could with the money they got.
They're not connected in any way, other than the fact that they wanted to connect the trail.
They're part of the same working system. Yes, you can't get anywhere.
The Keen Bridge came up when Wilkinson was finishing up the development.
That was at the meeting.
And the language in the contract was not clear enough.
Okay, whatever. Like I said, it's water under the bridge, but here we are, so we need to get it done.
So the compromise was, at that point, that the township agreed to provide the material to build it at that point. But we weren't in a position to force Wilkinson to do it.
No, so I think Paul Overton did it, with probably volunteers.
No.
So I don't want to mix up Ethan's project, but I don't see a point... I don't see a point in doing one without the other. I really don't. Because you're going to walk somewhere and then stop. He won't be able to get to the Keen Trail without fixing the Keen Bridge.
We need to get this one run by an insurance company.
To find out if it's more dangerous to put a ramp?
To find out what our legal liability is. To find out what our legal liability is. I talked to, uh, our agent there at the Cato Convention in early March. And I just talked to him in general terms, just about the Pam Sharp Bridge. He wasn't too excited about it, but he wanted some details. He wanted to look at it. They'd probably come down and inspect it. So...
Talking about government bureaucracy.
This is not even doing, doing...
This one's not even doing.
We'll have these people together so they can all at once.
You already cleared your... So, how long does it take Paul to enter?
Try.
Well, he, he probably is gonna come down and look at it. I mean, if you watch what happens with...
Show the photos.
With playing around equipment, uh, there's pretty particular about all that stuff, but...
But it can only become safer.
I don't, I'm not disputing that, but we still need to have reliability covered. This thing was built without really the township approval. I don't think anybody knew this was even built.
Joan, do you have an opinion on this?
I can, I can send this to Andrew.
See if they can do it without...
See, see what it says about...
And I'll tell you right now, it's about four foot step up.
So, the, the issue is that it's, if we're gonna do anything to this, the King Bridge, we want to have it covered by insurance, but anything that, logically, anything we do with a ramp would be an improvement, but it may not cover what...
May need to do more.
I still, I still need to get their disposition, because he said something about increasing our liability insurance every, so...
So, Ethan, can we have a week to try to work that out? Is it, what's your timeline?
Well, look, we don't want to hold their bridge up. Their separate project.
But we're gonna have the people together.
I understand that, but this thing just came up. I just saw this thing today.
This is why I ran a year and a half ago is because I couldn't believe we couldn't get Wilkinson to build the bridge. So, it hasn't just come up. I'm sorry. Ethan...
You couldn't build the bridge because the contract was not clear enough for us to force it.
When do you need your project done?
My absolute deadline to have everything finished, like, all the, uh, eagle paperwork and all that done is, uh, June twenty-seventh, then we can do it there. So, um, I would actually like to get the materials as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And I was thinking about, like, um, around April.
Before all the vegetation goes crazy too.
The rain starts.
Yeah. His ninety goes nuts and et cetera, yeah.
I just want to add, uh, the three, the three-by-decking that they asked for on this Jeff found it at a, uh, A and A offer, but they have that special order from them, so they said it would take about four weeks to get that in. So, we need some, some lead time on that to get the orders.
So, we need to start.
What's the, uh, what's the estimated cost of the material?
For Ethan's bridge?
Just Ethan's bridge, yeah.
I, I think it's in the twenty-five-hundred-dollar range, correct, Ethan?
Yeah, it's in the paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand numbers, uh, which is...
Twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars.
Don't say that.
Yeah. It's in here.
I thought that Ziff found it, everybody had a heart for that.
Okay, that, that's fine. We have no issue with twenty-five hundred.
It's already here, twenty-four sixty-five.
I might have it. But, um, I have the big lumber which has the twenty-five-hundred number. I actually had, uh, yeah, I just got a discount for twenty percent, so that actually knocked it down to, uh, it's a hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Very good. Good. Good job.
Uh, what about the, uh, delivery of the material? Will it deliver it or you, or do you have to go over and get it?
There's an additional charge for delivery and you were thinking, because we don't necessarily have a secure place to put it, if we could store it here before we come pick it up as a material.
Yeah.
Put it inside.
You need to put it, you know, in a place that's out of the way, because, you know, it could disappear here also.
If we have some sort of idea, we need an idea, you know, when...
We can arrange that pretty quickly. Jeff can find a place to store it, so that shouldn't be a...
Well, we have to, we have to, you know, get our people together. Also, this is, you know, the tip of the iceberg, just want to know where...
Well, since you're gonna, we're gonna do the project, this, buying, placing the order for the material and getting it moved to this location shouldn't be on the path of your, your labor issues.
Right.
So, I'm saying, what I'm suggesting, you get the material order going, get it in and get the material delivered. The sooner you get it in hand, then that issue is out of your, out of, out of the, uh, out of that one point.
Yeah, we agree.
One question I wouldn't want to throw, maybe want to throw in that, uh, Paul's estimate for the ramps on the, uh, Keen Bridge is about fifteen hundred dollars. I mean, if we put it into the discount, maybe we can also save three hundred dollars with that and bring that cost down to twelve hundred dollars.
Very good idea.
So, I'm wondering if it might make sense to wait before we order the materials until we talk to our insurance agent, which I'm sure we can do by the end of the week.
Oh, could you do two different orders? Can't you just put your orders, you better fully go?
We can get a better discount.
Yeah, but did you get, you wanna get one discount?
Well, you do it, well, you make it, you make an agreement with it. So, coming from AA lumber?
Well, I mean, the discount came from what, Oxford?
Yeah, Oxford, yeah. They've been, we've bought a lot of stuff from Oxford.
They don't carry the three-eight, the three-by lumber, correct?
All right, well, here's the thing with the Oxford. They're, they're pretty flexible. You just tell them you got another order coming on and you want the same discount on the second order as the first one.
There's a really good chance that, um, the way that it works as far as Eagle Scout goes, both of the owners of, of Oxford Feed Lumber are Eagle Scouts. And they'll give Ethan the discount, you know, but it's not gonna be an ongoing, you know, it's a one-shot deal.
So, is it why they put it together? So, it would be okay if we put the other materials together, maybe?
If you want...
Because you guys are all gonna do it together.
Go that route, uh, you know?
I think it's crazy not to. I really do. I think it's penny wise and pound foolish. I mean, I love what you're doing and I would love to be able to walk on your trail and get somewhere versus not be able to get to the Keen Trail. To me, it just doesn't really make sense. It's not a lot of money, um, it, it just seems like the right thing.
Are your, are your volunteers willing to do the additional work or who do you ask for that?
I think that any H O A volunteer would, would step up to Paul and Paul has some volunteers to do that, you know, keep, you know, Ethan focused on the...
His project, yeah.
And, and we could work with Paul or...
And finish up... Get it done together. It's a great community. I just love the community spirit. I'll see that much of that. So, so Joan, you'll look into the legal issues, but...
I will contact...
I am comfortable if other people are voting on whether to put it together and whether we're willing to find the money for the total amount, assuming that there's no insurance issues, yeah.
But we're setting the precedent.
That's fine. I think we set a precedent when we didn't hold Wilkinson to the, the beat of the mic.
The language in the contract just didn't allow that.
Yeah, it's, um, what does "construct a trail" mean to you? You construct a trail, it doesn't mean no a trail.
But if it said "bridge," if it had heard "bridge," it would be...
You're holding the money. We could, we could have flexed our muscles.
"Construct" means to build, you know, it doesn't mean to have no... I mean, I, I would disagree. I feel like Wilkinson should be responsible for that.
It's ridiculous and it's dumb, so...
We should build these bridges and move forward.
So, now this is our money. Let's do it. Do the right thing.
Agree.
All right, Joan, we need to get, uh, Andrew, uh...
I, I will reach out to Andrew tomorrow and whenever he tells me, I will send out to the board to...
Yeah, let us know what his issue is, because the way I talk to him, he probably wants to see something.
But, uh, just remember, John, we're talking about a fifty-foot bridge versus these smaller, lower ones too. I mean, when we did the one on the fourth farm, we did that problem with that.
They all present a liability for none. The township could also for the H O A up there, so...
Well, I can just tell you, I stood a good chance of falling when I was trying to get on off that thing today. And you guys have done it, I'm sure. It's crazy. So, it's much more dangerous as it is.
I, I don't doubt that.
The bridge is awesome. It's built amazingly, but you have to literally walk up the height of this cable to get on it.
But you're getting, you're, you're fine. You're good.
You're good.
Uh, final question. Um, as an Eagle Scout project, the scope of this is significantly greater than any Eagle Scout project we ever had in here. My question is, is the scoutmaster in Westbrook okay with this project? Well, as you being responsible for this. Because you get a lot of help, that's the question. I was, I, I've been out scouting for thirty years. I don't, I don't know what the rules are right now, but I, I would just make sure that your scoutmaster is okay with the project. Right, and I think that he was, uh, supportive. Okay. Because it's a bigger...
He'll do his homework. He'll make sure that it's all okay. And there's a lot of support. You clearly just want to support. Good job, volunteer.
Um, let me see, one other thing. We have a design for this, these ramps to show, um, yeah. John, Paul, I'm sure you have one.
I, I believe it's the same one that I was on, uh, with this plan, who shows the ramps here after the mine.
But we'll assume there's a design that's...
Uh, you gotta show him something, that's all.
Yes. So, so, yeah, if you can show him, Joan, I'm sure Paul will pass something for you.
Well, we could use this thing right here.
Right, that, that's what, yeah, I can send, I can send this and say, these ramps are gone.
In the interest of expediting, I would get these, um, get this drawing up here to them with those photos.
Okay, we'll do it.
And you might want to give him the length and width of the bridge, because right now he can't determine what the dimensions are by looking at the pictures.
It's about, it's about from here to the end of the table. I mean, you can just go over there and look at it. And it's, um, got great armored handrails. I mean, it's very safe.
What, what is the distance between a handrail and that? Was what he meant to read this?
Um, you mean, top to bottom?
With between, uh...
Uh, it's about the width of this table, actually.
Four feet, okay, so four.
Why don't you get Jeff to go over there and make some...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Get some actual margins, because I mean...
About twenty foot long, forty foot.
If you approach him with something that's, uh, defined, I think you get a better chance of...
Well, that's what I said, between twenty...
Yeah, but no, no, well, Jeff could.
Yeah, and thank you guys for being so consistently persistent with this. It's really, we really appreciate it.
How would you guys decide on, um, the decking lumber? Because you couldn't get the, the three-by. Are you gonna go with the two-by or are you...
Yeah, the two-by-six.
So, do you have a...
Yeah.
Well, that's what I, that's what I told him. He needs to know whether...
So, oh, there's an option here to get, to get it all from Oxford?
Yeah, scale people need to say that.
Yeah, we have, just at the, uh, actually, I need to be a two-by boards for the bridge, so it's...
Yeah, because the people are trying to...
Because this plan was called for, what, three-bys, three-wide?
Yeah, that's what that meant by the availability problem that, uh, we mentioned Chinese load is good, uh, two-by-six.
So, you don't have a long lead time.
So, you don't have that availability.
We, we can get that, but you don't want the three-bys?
That's for, that's for Paul's bridge.
It's not on with the two, I thought it was.
No, uh, this bridge is gonna be, um, two-by-twelves for the, for the joists and the decking is going to be two-by-six.
Any two-inch thick board is gonna be okay for the deck, so we're not changing the design.
Five joists is normal.
Just easier.
No. Of course, the structural issue is not gonna be changing the depth of the decking boards, so...
Well, Paul's bridge is, is a three-by?
The King Bridge?
And is there gonna be material...
The lighting getting that material from Paul?
Well, that's...
AA can get that, can get three-bys.
Yes, but it has, it's a quarter.
It's a, yeah, a special order.
And that'll take them off.
Well, they said it could take up to four weeks. We can reach out to Freddie and see.
Yeah, up to four weeks is what I'm just told.
Two-by-six tree.
Actually, that's the design based on the two-by-six. We're recommending following the design.
Yeah, perfect. We don't need over...
So, we put the rank...
I don't know about Paul's. You're saying Paul is, they have his on his?
Yeah, that's what, uh, Joan was saying, is a three-by and then that's a special order which might take more time. And we can come from AA instead of Oxford, which we want to get the...
I can just speak to Paul. Yeah, I can speak, well, we can get the Paul and get her and get that if you guys want that.
I don't know why, why would you want the three-inch wide boards? It's...
This was done like five years ago, the original.
It is an odd material, a three-by-two tree.
Yeah, horse. Serious, serious.
Oh, that was nice. But that's a little rough for horses in there. I checked my dog station. She got into the rams and blood, she got blood all over him. He's got blood everywhere. It's a little rough.
Okay, so we have, um, twenty-five-hundred here less, twenty-five-hundred plus fifteen-hundred, right?
Probably less because Ethan's saying he's got a deal of two thousand.
It's also a match.
Yeah, so you're probably up to about three, three thousand, thirty-two hundred or something.
So, we're forty, we're four thousand less, what, twenty percent?
Yeah, it's like two hundred.
So, it's thirty-two, thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, you, you wanna make it a little bit of a...
I say thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five hundred, is that it?
Yeah.
Four thousand, we had to.
That's before the discount.
Well, yeah, but wait a minute, it's, it's for, before the discount.
Right.
So, you go...
Thirty-five should be.
Sorry? That number puts all the hardware and everything up just a lumber?
The two thousand with discount, that's, this is an approximation. He's two thousand fifty-three, or seventy-three, I believe. That's, uh, that's approximately what it will be with the, with the discount.
But not delivered.
That's for materials for the forty-six-foot bridge, not including delivery.
Gotcha.
Should we say, should we give it ten percent cushion, like thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, I think thirty-five is sensible to deliver.
That's lumber anyways.
It's changed.
And most of the...
Sorry?
Two plus fifteen.
And if that's, there are some fascinating, we have to get from a different source that we can do that.
It's two thousand after.
Or if we generally lock it, do the first thing, you guys can just do it up to the thirty-five hundred.
That'll, that'll get you there than some, like, banking.
So, should I, you go ahead and read this?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to amend the motion for money plus the additional scope of work.
Mr. Chairman, the, there, there was a motion presented. It wasn't completed.
Right. Well, I think we withdrew it.
You want to, you want to withdraw it?
We had to modify.
I would withdraw it and restate it. I don't know, because legally, it's, uh, just, uh, withdraw the previous motion which was never completed.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm gonna try it, just if this is okay. Make sure that you include the scope of work for, the scope of work for both locations, right? Okay, um, if I pause, that means I'm wanting boarding. I make a motion that the board supervisors accept Ethan Shaveland's plan to build a bridge to connect the Keen Trail to the Leamington open space as well as, uh, the Keen Trail bridge ramps with, uh, and fund this, fund these projects up to the cost of thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
I'm okay with the way you're running it.
Good job, Stefan.
Uh, okay, I'm, uh, uh, just a second. Paul?
I'm David.
Paul's...
This one's...
Paul was not a supervisor.
Uh, the second, invite the, uh, any further discussion?
No.
All favors the aye?
Aye.
Uh, any names, motion carries, surprise area.
Thank you guys. Thank you all. And welcome.
All right, good luck.
If you need any help, I'm sure we can all come out soon, but we might be more trouble.
For a lot. Some people want to know if you need, uh, your shore people or something. Well, you know, depending on how much the scope of this has changed, but, uh, what's your...
Are you not building the house?
I can do that.
Thank you, guys. Another fun project. Uh, we're, yeah, who am I? This is Hoshonai, yeah.
So, we have the three, uh, items. At first, the, the next line is about the MS four.
Yeah, but I'm not sure we're gonna, we threw a motion on this thing, because we got a, we got a, an extension. We got an extension.
Okay, so we don't need to, yeah.
So, really, we're gonna have a discussion at all, or anything?
Yeah, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
And that's why Pete learned.
That's right. So, we're gonna have a discussion, but we don't need to make a move. The last, uh, the last board meeting we had, uh, our engineers, uh, presented a plan, a very complex plan with, um, a mountain of technical information in this book here. And I was very uncomfortable, uh, proceeding with the permit application based on the complexity of it. So, what I asked for, really asked for was to request an extension. And fortunately, we got a three-month extension. So, I think, um, that's really good, because that should give us an opportunity to, uh, think this thing out very carefully and understand what the potential scopes of work are. And we probably need to, uh, do some, some work about scope development on these. That's my general comment here. So, I guess the other question I have is, Ellen, is that some years ago, we engaged your group, um, in this idea to share costs of these BNP of the surrounding townships. So, my question right now, do we share this with anybody?
So, I think that the surrounding townships frankly are in the same boat that you guys are. Where everybody, the timeline has stretched out much longer than any of us anticipated, right? And everybody is in sort of the same boat in terms of... right? And everybody is in sort of the same boat in terms of getting to the point of understanding what the pollution reductions are that they are expected to be. So, what about the, no, ten days ago, we had a meeting with all the municipalities. In one plan that we've been working with over the last several years, the only one that pretty much knows where they are is West Grove. That hasn't, their, their load down hasn't changed substantially. And everybody else had to do recalculations as you, as you guys did this, right? And some of them are still in the process of working through that. So, but everybody had to do recalculations. I would say everybody, with the exception of West Grove, would, yeah.
But they had the Addle.
Yeah, but Addle also had a, everybody except West Grove had an increase in terms of the amount of load that they, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, where we are now is now we understand what everybody, have a better sense of the scope of what everybody needs to do.
Everybody's got a permit ready to submit, right?
No, they're all very much in the same boat as you are.
Did they ask for extensions?
A bunch of them did, yes.
Okay, so we weren't the only one.
You were not the only one.
So, it wasn't a bad idea, anyway?
No. No, and part of that was, we had a conversation in October with DEP, asking some questions that, literally about farmland, which is relevant for you guys, and farmland within the urbanized area, and we've been waiting for responses, and quite frankly, haven't gotten those responses.
No.
And that would help clarify, I, I'm not exactly sure the kinds of questions that you had at your last meeting, but one of the things that's clear to me about your, your situation is that you do have, just from looking at the plans, you do have a pretty decent chunk of land that is farmland in your urbanized area, right? And how that gets addressed and is, I mean, it's like fifty percent, almost fifty percent of the load.
I think, I think that's an important strategy item that I want to sort out with the board tonight, and just kind of just outline it, is, is we have a significant amount of farmland included in this permit.
Right.
And all that farmland is being managed by the Chester County Conservation District.
That's right.
They all have a conservation plan.
They're all supposed to have.
And just to put it in perspective, the Conservation District is the enforcement arm of the DEP, so they are indeed a single organization, and functionally, in my mind, they are.
Well, they may be functionally in your mind. Unfortunately, the enforcement powers on ag land is quite different from what they can do unless they're enforcing a soil erosion and sedimentation control. They don't have enforcement authority over a conservation plan. Those are, there's not quite the same...
Yeah, but these organizations are functionally linked.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That's the point, okay. I'm not going to quibble over who's got authority over what land, but these organizations are essentially linked.
And with respect to how those, how that land is managed, and, and how they coordinate with both the Conservation District and the NRCS in terms of implementing project volume, that's the part that we have been talking about in terms of how we coordinate that across all of the municipalities in White Clay, to achieve ideally a strategy where we all understand what the Conservation District is working on with those farmers that are in the urbanized area throughout White Clay, because that, there's already programming placed there. That should all be things that we can document without having the township have any funding obligation. There should be no funding obligation.
The point, I think the point is that we want to eliminate those lands from the responsibility of our permit, because they're already being managed by the Conservation District, which indeed is the DEP.
So, I, I had a conversation with one of the folks at DEP in Harrisburg on this topic since the time of our last meeting. There was a very clear communication that that won't happen. They will not let us parse out that land, but we will be able to say, "Okay, that land has a conservation plan on it, it's managing X amount, so it's taken care of," in other words, so.
So, we don't have to deal with it?
Well, so it's more a matter of explaining what the, what the status is of the lands within the urbanized area. And it's a little tricky, anyway, we wanted to be able to...
Well, the permit doesn't do that now, right? I mean, the, the, the application doesn't
The application does not parse it out, but, right, and the point being here that we would be able to have a strategy where we would say, "Yes, there's ag land in the urbanized area. Here's what the Conservation District is doing with respect to that ag land. They're going to be reporting to us. That's how we're going to manage it in this permit." So, you necessarily, we'd be able to parse it out, but you would have a strategy for reporting on what's happening there that does not involve any expenditure of funding by the township.
But does it, does it reduce our goals? So, we have left, does, those are...
Does it change our sediment numbers?
It should, because as long as those farmers are doing the things that they're supposed to do on their properties, yes. Now, if they're not, that's where we have the conversation with the Conservation District.
Well, the Conservation District has got the ability to...
Right, and so that's where we have to have that conversation.
All right.
But my point here, I just want to be clear, my point here is to see as, I think there should be a strategy, and I had this conversation with Lee Murphy from DEP, where you're able to explain what's happening on that land, but it's not a situation where you should be expending township dollars to ensure pollution reduction on that property.
I agree. All right, so, so what needs to be done is we need to develop some documentation that specifically addresses these parcels.
And that can be part of your strategy in the permit process for this next five years. You do not have to have it all spelled out with your application.
No, I want to put my oar in the water right from the beginning here.
If you want to reduce your set, the amount of sediment, you have to reduce.
Okay, okay. What you want to have is you want to have a plan for five years. Okay, so, let's just, I'm going to pick numbers out of the blue, and they have great numbers from their plan, okay? So, let's say your pollution reduction for, to meet the TMDL was five hundred thousand pounds. To meet the TMDL, whole big picture thing, to meet five, you only have to do ten percent in this permit period, right? So, that's fifty thousand. Now, let's say that what we figure out is that with all the, the work that's been done on the ag land, you actually can meet that fifty thousand, right? But you have five years to meet that fifty thousand. You don't have to get that done by June. You don't have to have that, have that all figured out and explained by June. You have to meet that fifty thousand in that five year permit term.
Yeah, but how much effort it is to do that now? We've got three months to do it.
John, I'm very sorry to tell you, this is actually going to be more than three months of effort. And the problem is because, well, the problem is because it, this involves the conservation, what we don't know quite yet is how far down the road the Conservation District is in terms of identifying these properties. First, we have to know which ones are only in the, in the urbanized area. And the other problem is that the Conservation District will not share specific information with us about each individual farm. They are not allowed to. So, we have to do this, that's one reason we wanted to do this on a water bank, because it's very frustrating.
This whole thing, this whole thing is incredibly frustrating, and it's been that way since we started this discussion, and we just can't seem to get our hands on anything here, and it just, people are asking us to spend lots of money, commit the money, and then we're not able to define what we're trying to do.
So, what I'm suggesting is that in this permit cycle, you say, in the permit application, you guys tell me if you think this is off base. Well, you say, "Okay, we know we've got a big chunk of ag land in our urbanized area. We got to figure out what's happening with that, and we will be reporting on that during this permit period. We anticipate that there will be some farmers who have implemented BMPs on their land, and we will be able to report a reduction. We just don't know what, what the extent of that reduction is." I don't know you'll be able to get that information by, in the next three months, but John, I also don't know that you'd want to get that information in the next three months, because what you want is you want to be able to count that towards this permit, as opposed to saying, "So, actually, our pollutant should be less than it is." You want to count it towards your permit reduction. Does that, do you understand what I'm saying? So, instead of saying, "Our pollutant, instead of saying that our baseline is five hundred thousand, and we should reduce our, you know, reduce that by X amount and take ten percent of that," you want it to be part of that ten percent for that, for that five year term.
So, it looks like you've done something.
So, it looks like you've done something.
So, if you're trying to lose weight, you want to weigh two or five to get them...
Yeah, I agree. Can I just ask you a simple question?
So, Sebastian, yeah, well, we're...
I'm trying to dress the engineer.
Okay, so, John, hold just, just hold on, let me just ask a question. So, you only have this whole sub we have concert lands, and there are farmlands here. The farms that are not under easements, they don't, they don't have any, they're considered part of the total anyhow, aren't they? Because they're...
No, it only is the farms that are in the urbanized area that count towards this total. Not all farms in your township do it, right? And I don't know what the acreage is in terms of...
Does anyone know what our urbanized area can entail?
Pretty much your full border.
Yeah, see, it's, you have your...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oh, it's this one, okay. Okay, so, what, it's the whole pink thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, the farms that are in there are the ones that count, whether or not they're concerted?
Correct, whether or not they're, so, not have to be concerted, but once it are concerted...
But the next flat, like, probably, I would say, a hundred percent of them have concerted.
Okay, okay. I'm going to keep my book. I can see this is going to be a long...
Well, they should have a plan.
Okay. So, this thing's, Pete, are you okay with this, or are you confused?
Uh...
I need you guys to be up on it.
We're going to ask the engineers in a minute, what can, what can they actually do when we're done talking here?
Yeah, but I want to make sure from, that they know what you need to...
I'm going to ask them what they can do.
Right, so we talked about three different strategies that are being reviewed. One is to figure out what the heck's going on in the ag land piece, because...
We figured it out, we just...
Right, so that was number one. Number two was John was looking at, and Shane has helped provide a map here that outlines some opportunities in terms of right carry buffers.
Okay.
So, those, those would be additional options.
Is that going to...
Right carry buffers, so it's a matter of being able to protect areas immediately adjacent to streams, so that you're reducing the, you know, stormwater flows across land and hit the streams. If you put in a nice buffer there, it'll slow that and ideally absorb some of that pollution, right?
So, the ones that are on protected land are awesome. That's going to be easier to do than the ones that are not on protected land.
They should be easier to do, yes.
Very cool.
Uh, so that's another strategy. The other thing we talked about was being able to, and we didn't get into a lot of detail with this, Glenn, in our, in our conversation with you, but I did with Ron afterwards, was whether you have any opportunities to access certain gravel road project money for looking at low volume roads within your urbanized area. So, low volume runs are roads that have five year month vehicle trips per day or less, and the Conservation District runs a program that allows you to put in stormwater BMPs along those roads, and you get fifty percent of the funding from the Conservation District to do that work. It also applies for road street crossings. So, that was another thing to, you know, you know, right, I was going to say, you guys know that you've done this before.
Or wait, or wait for reverse, for the Conservation District.
And so, do you think that you have other roads within the urbanized area?
We only have two dirt road.
No, but low volume.
Well, what, what we have to do is, is, I try and identify that.
That's like, I think you covered your two.
What we've done before for, for a project one has smelled, the Conservation District let us put out a camera, and we did the count ourselves. Jeff put it out, and, you know, we did it over a one...
Two week period or something like that?
Yep. And then he, he took the camera over all the vehicles, and they, they went with that. They, they accepted that. So, I mean, if we, we could try and identify some of the volume.
What was that, that count, do you remember?
What was?
The car count on Esma.
What was it, three hundred?
Don't, don't hold me to this, because I like three seventy-five.
That's a good idea, what other roads and like, all right, this thing is, this thing is still a morass to me.
Right. So, there are two...
Hold on a second, I hear Olsko, and I just can't seem to put this together.
Well, then, why don't you get it, John?
Um, what I'm going to ask the engineers is, if we have to define the farmland that has these conservation easements, how much trouble is it to identify them and document in some way?
Well, to answer that first one is, if we go with the map shed program, which is what we utilize in this, this White Clay and Soria, we already did that, and fifty, there's what, fifty percent?
Right.
Yeah, it's...
What's the number?
In the TMDL area, we have about three hundred and eighteen acres of crop land in, in, in the TMDL.
There are going to be some real lumpers.
And that's for a match.
Glenn, excuse me, were you disqualified? Do you remember that most recently, that we said we talked about?
So, what, what's the total acreage of the TMDL area? Proximally.
So, are we talking just in the White Clay, or are we talking White Clay, Chesapeake?
Oh, hold on a second, let me see if I can get...
This is just the, the White Clay area.
All right, you don't, all right, you don't have, I'm trying, just told me there was how many, three hundred and some acres or four?
Three hundred and eighteen acres of crop land.
Three eighteen.
In the White Clay.
And then I believe, well, I'll be wrong when we discuss, or we reran the number quickly after our meeting last month, and that one was fast. That would result in a fifty percent reduction of the load.
Right, because we just wrote a number, and if we took that three hundred and eighteen of crop land out, it would knock our, knock our load down roughly by fifty percent.
So, this reduces the load by fifty percent.
Right, so you're, you're getting a lot of your pollutant from the ag lands, and this is the basis, the whole conversation we're trying to have with them. This is not supposed to be a program about reducing ag pollution, right? So, that's why we want to talk, we should be able to have a strategy that says, "Okay, ag pollution's getting taken care of, but it's not the township's funding responsibility to take care of that."
It's the development.
They're not going to let us take that land, they're not going to let us show a map that doesn't have that land in the urbanized area, but we can have a strategy that says, "Ag is going to get dealt with through the Conservation District," basically, you know, is what you're saying. That's the strategy.
Now, so how do I document this?
So, I mean, we could work on some language with Glenn and Pete about how to do that.
That'd be correct.
And one of the things that we talked about at this meeting, I mean, other municipalities in White Clay are, are contemplating the same approach, basically saying, "Okay, look, this is, this whole ag land in the urbanized area just makes no sense to us. We need to talk to the Conservation District, find out what's going on, find out how many farm, how much of that farmland is already under a conservation plan, what kind of BMPs they've already put in place."
Why don't we have access to that information from the Conservation District?
Because the farmers will not allow that information to be shared.
Okay, so the, the landowners are not allowed?
Correct. And that is an NRCS policy, that they will not share that specific information. We can get it on a broader basis, we can get it, you know, like on a watershed basis, and a proportion of that.
We can't find out what the BMP, what BMPs are being used, then how are we going to do this?
Well, so that, the point would be, okay, what, what I'd say to Chris from our Conservation District, "Okay, Chris, here's the, I'm going to give you a map, here's the urbanized area. For each one of these municipalities, you come back and tell us what acreage BMPs you got in there, what kind of BMPs, and, and we'll get a summary of that from them." And the pollutant reductions that we can, they can give it to us that, in a lump sum sort of thing. They just cannot give it to us individually by far. And so, that's part of why I'm saying it's going to be harder to get this in three months than you may think.
I, I still need to work on it. I mean, I got a three month extension, and I'm going to use that to further define our effort. And I'm not going to sit here and just wait for three months to go by and have to submit the same permit we almost had to do the other day, so.
So, okay.
Well, there's some ideas.
So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to engage our engineers to help me define the strategy.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we've talked about this too. The, the, I'm curious, what is most troubling to you about submitting the permit?
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand it. I mean, it's just...
So, John, this might not be your wheelhouse.
It was a morass.
I mean, it's not that complicated.
I had a half hour conversation, and I've only got a couple of points written down here.
So, maybe you need a subcommittee doing this. I don't think this is a good use of all our time. I think you need people, I'm sure you have, what do other townships do? Do they have subcommittees, or do they have natural resource groups, or what? How do they put this together?
I think the board needs to do this, because...
The board needs to understand, John, that you're not at the same place other people are. So, we have to figure out how to bring everyone up without having to sit here each time going over the same things. So, just, what other ways are there to handle this?
Well, I, I mean, I haven't been at every board meeting in every, every municipality as they've gone through their permit. They're not all at the point where you guys are, because They're not all at the point where you guys are, because they are still figuring out some of the questions that, you know, to be resolved. Generally, I mean, you know, they defer to the engineers, and if the engineers say, here's the permit application, they defer to the engineers.
I see.
I mean, I guess that's been your experience in other municipalities.
Here's the word.
So-
Here's one of the words, is the costs that were presented to us years ago when this thing started.
Yep.
The number was given to me for Franklin Township was $2 million over 10 years.
Yes.
That's 200,000 a year. That is a major, major expense for a township. We could not manage that with our current files.
Right.
There would have to be a stormwater tax or something like that. And I think that's the ultimate goal of the organizations that are driving this, is to get people to generate a stormwater tax, which is something I'm not particularly happy to do, but that 200, that $2 million over 10 years sticks in my mind.
But like, I know, because we had a conversation, we went through numbers, it's nowhere near $200,000.
We don't know that.
Well, we talked about it already. We do, we did the math. We had Shane here telling us numbers. We have to listen to the numbers, we have to listen to the engineers, and then we have to do our best. By us worrying and wringing our hands isn't gonna change anything. We need to get as much information as we can and then move.
Alright, so what are you gonna do?
Personally, I have no problem with what the engineers put together. So I would add trees, that's the only thing I would do differently.
So what I'll tell you is that what the plan requires is that you present an option for how you're going to get to your pollutant load reductions. You are not required, it's a plan.
It's a plan.
You are not required to do the exact projects that are in that permit, because everybody knows, some of these townships have put projects in there that are on private land. The landowner may not agree. DEP understands that, so you are not beholden to implement each project exactly as it is put in that plan, it is just a plan. What DEP wants to see is that you understand that there's an issue to be addressed, and that you have some way, that you're thinking about how to address it. It also does not require that you spend a certain amount of money. Our goal is to try and figure out ways for you to spend the least amount of money as possible, or at least the amount of money that makes sense for your jurisdiction. It makes no sense in my life for you guys to spend any money doing anything on ag land. So from my perspective, I don't think you should be spending any money on 50% of the load that's outlined in your permit application.
Great.
That's my, and so that's what I wanna help you figure out, is how we do that part. And then how do we identify some other projects, sorry, I'm gonna finish my question, my sentence. And how do we identify other projects to address a good chunk of that 50, other 50% of your load? And that's thinking about our whole TMV.
He's got projects in here to address the whole thing, right?
I understand that.
This is not right, it's not.
So you can go ahead and adopt this plan and put it in, and you can say, you know what, those are not the projects we're gonna do. The only hurdle to that is when you decide on a different project, you gotta have a public hearing to say, you know, we're changing the plan, we're putting in a different project. You know that you didn't get anybody showing up for your public hearings anyway, so that's the hurdle to changing some aspect of the plan. Is that you have to have a public hearing.
Stefan, David.
Alright, so how do we adjust, how do we put the language that we just talked about?
I think that, I'm more than happy to work with Pete and Glenn on that.
I don't wanna submit this permit without that language in there.
I think that's very fair, I think that's very fair, and I think we can work on that language. And I'm more than comfortable, because I did have this conversation with Lee Murphy at DEP, I'm very comfortable that, you know, and I said to him, precisely that, I don't think the townships should spend any money. He's like, all we need to know is how they're addressing that load in that urbanized area. It does not require that the township is spending the money to get it done.
Okay, so-
Are you guys in agreement with this?
On ag, on ag.
I think so, I'm gonna say it differently, I guess.
That's fine.
Great.
Alright.
That's right.
We have, I'd let him jump in any time. Right now, we, and John, you're right, we start, years ago, we were millions of dollars. And with, again, moving target all the time, we're going much less, so that's a good thing, and I can understand why you wanna know what you're getting into. Right now, the load is 77,000?
79,000 changed.
79,000.
For both of them or just for one?
Just the TMV, which is your biggest elephant in the world to deal with. The PRP is just noise in comparison.
Okay.
So what's the number?
79,000 changed.
79.
So, if we go with the ag land concept-
That's in what, pounds per year?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we go with the ag concept, and say 50% of that, so let's say it's just 80% of the amount.
Less 50%.
Right, so then we're down to 40,000, okay?
Right.
So if we, in the text, we say there's 40,000 that is supposed to be accounted for through ag conservation and farmers, and it's not in your real house, you, the township, are dealing with 40,000. Right there, whatever number we had before, you just cut it in half to spare, okay? So that's a good thing, so-
Yeah, I'm understanding this.
Right, so from 900, and for, and I know Shane, we disagree maybe on exactly which stream could be restored or not, but for conversation's sake, the 79,000 equated to a 935-foot stream?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and at 200 bucks a foot from Shane, that was-
Tops.
Better than 500.
Yes, tops.
To mathematician.
Right.
300, 900.
Right, and then we had soft costs and a lot of other stuff.
Right.
So, if we cut that number, in taking off 50% for the ag, the stream restoration number goes in half. So from this 975, let's say now it's down to, we'll say 500, and at the 200 a foot, it's now down to 100. And that's over a five-year period, so that's 20,000 a year.
Okay.
That's manageable, I think.
Now, you said, the last time we were here, we had two projects identified, one on some private property.
Yes, it was, uh-
Which was about, it's about 30,000.
That was for the PRP, that was for the chat.
The guy who had the 100, so, PR.
Yeah, the pollution, that's the other one, we're not on TMV, that's why you have two plans with the chat.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And the white clay is more demanding, probably because it's a wild and scenic, because it's TMV.
Actually, this is not in during the-
Oh, really?
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
Just a little conversation in time.
Okay. So the TMV was the Franklin Preserve, and that may, and that was because you-
I wish you had 900 feet or something.
Yeah, 900 some odd feet, now, there may or may not be, depending what permits we can get, what, if they're gonna let us take down woods to restore the stream, it's a double-edged sword, so we may have to find a different stream within there, and may have to deal with the private property there, but just from a conversation standpoint, the length of the, for stream restoration category, the length will change.
We own it, so we've got the ability to manage it better than-
Right, but Pete's point is, and this goes back to being a plan, right? If that stretch doesn't work, we know we need about this length, right? So 500 feet is what I heard said.
Well, we cut it in half, yes.
Right, you cut it in half, so we're looking at about, basically what the plan would say is, here's one 500-foot section.
Right.
If we can't do that, we understand we gotta do 500 feet somewhere.
Correct.
That's sort of what DEP's looking for.
And that's, this is how you'll land, this is telling you places you could go.
This is telling you other places that are on deserted properties, that you could be looking at. All these little creek squiggles are on, kind of land that's, where you could also be looking at those type of projects.
And there's another option that has recently been discussed, I'll say mostly fostered, through Shane, I think has talked a little bit about some, I'll say repairing or foresting buffers along streams, different than a stream restoration or independent, correct?
Right.
So, there are targeted properties, perhaps, that where you drive around and you don't see many trees or brush along streams, and then you put, now, we ran a number on that briefly, and I think it's, I mean, 85 acres.
You know, out of all the BNP's we talked about, we talked about the stream restoration. The other one we talked about are some basin upgrades, but the basin upgrades-
Three ways you can do it.
The basin upgrades had some issues because we had to reconfigure the basins. We'll just scrape it, I mean-
They're on private, they're on HR.
Go redesign something in there, or some, there were some internal components, the man who's the stormwater, and they were vulnerable to damage.
Yes, agree.
So, that got me thinking that was less of a disaster because of the potential damage. The one BNP that has the most possibility, the best possibility of actually doing something are the stream restorations. Because you're widening the stream to reduce the velocity and reduce the erosion of the banks. So from a tangible standpoint, that makes sense to me.
Well, as long as you're dealing with the upstream, you gotta attenuate the flow upstream that has caused the erosion. So if you haven't done that already upstream, you're, there's no reason to do, you're not gonna get any benefit from that.
Well, the upstream's aren't even on our township.
But the point is, you've gotta, you've gotta locate that, you can't just put a stream bank restoration project anywhere and expect that you're actually, this has to do with wisely investing your township dollars. We've seen, I've had conversations with municipalities in the Chesapeake who've put in stream bank erosion projects, and then, and they're millions of dollars, they're very expensive projects, and they get undermined because they weren't put in the right place, and there goes that township investment. So you wanna make sure those projects are put in a place where that investment is gonna be able to be sustained.
I'm assuming that my engineers are proposing something that's gonna be sustainable.
I'm just letting you know that that's a very important term you have to say.
I can't control the upstream, I can't control the upstream.
John, if you can't control the upstream, you don't wanna put in a project that wastes your money.
There are nice, there are, you know, Pete, I'm sure you've seen this, but look at this map, there are great opportunities here that seem to be somewhat isolated on protected land. You know, there's this Laurel Bridge, three different fingers, there's this-
Where's that map, yeah?
Think over, this is a dangerously helpful map for us to maybe rethink our strategy. As you said, right now, we don't have to have that strength, we don't have to have the details.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we rethink the strategy, I am totally fine with having a stream bank erosion project as being the main focus.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's our strategy, it's the specifics.
Right, it's just where we locate, you know, you wanna be careful about, that's all.
Yeah.
And, you know, you don't want to be putting it on a stream, now, and I'm not suggesting that the places where they have suggested putting it are good ideas.
But I do like your point, don't do it just for the sake of doing it.
But it's also why several municipalities have not gone with stream bank erosion projects, because it is such a big investment, you get great reduction in terms of, in terms of setting.
Yeah, but you don't get any, you don't get any real credit, and the basin upgrades don't give you very much. And the trees and the streams are almost a zero, I don't see them doing that.
Okay, so from a financing perspective, what you, what we council municipalities think about is the life cycle of that BNP, okay? And what is the replacement cost of, if you have to replace that BNP, what is the replacement cost of putting in that BNP? So yes, you don't get a lot of reduction out of basin, stream, sorry, stormwater basin retrofits, but if one blows out, you gotta replace it, it's 20,000 bucks, it's not, or 50,000 bucks, it's not millions of dollars, okay? And one of the things the DEP will make-
I haven't heard, we haven't had any million-dollar proceeds yet, we're still in the-
Well, some of these stream bank erosion projects, and not, these aren't, we're not talking very long ones, we've had other projects that are long.
What's the price of that one we had in Franklin?
189,000.
It's still $200,000.
It wasn't millions, plus 100,000.
That's construction costs, right? That 200, that 200 dollars is about, what is it, construction cost? Well, it depends on, you know, my point is, what we council municipalities to do is to think about operations and maintenance and replacement costs, that full life cycle of that BNP, right? And so, yeah, you've got a construction cost, but what happens, what do you do if you have to replace it? If it blows up, DEP's gonna say, you gotta put it back in.
I hear that, so how do you, how do you do-
Not if it's a municipal BNP and you're the ones that have put it in.
Yeah, but how do you add municipal BNP's?
Alright, but how do you do that? I mean, anything you do, on a stream bank, is subject to damage.
Right.
It's just the nature of what we're doing.
Right, so that's why, that's why-
So I'm not saying that any of these things are-
It's where you choose to do it, look at the, you just have to look and think about the best places to do it. Do we have any municipal places?
But it's also why a lot of municipalities have a selection of BNP's, as opposed to just relying on one. So then, you have some flexibility in terms of what you're gonna do, you can say, well, we're gonna do some, we're gonna do some stormwater basin retrofits, you know, a little stream bank erosion projects, give yourself a little, I would suggest that you might wanna give yourself some flexibility so that if you find those opportunities, you can take advantage of.
So it sounds like we need to identify some additional stream bank restoration projects, other than the two we have right now.
We do, but we don't have to do that for the submission, John, it's not necessary for the submission.
That's correct, you don't need to do it for the submission.
So one concept could be working with the people that are holding the easements on these protected lands and saying, you're gonna contact them, or where there's areas on this map where there's no buffers, and that's part of your strategy. You don't have to identify every exact one, but you could, I'm assuming you could include this map and say, this is our strategy, we're gonna look at protected lands first, to identify places to put buffers and do stream restoration.
Right, 'cause the third strategy, one was basic rest, just to recap, another one was the stream restoration. There were other minor ones, but again, you don't get a lot of ag through that. The one thing recently with this map that presents is just planting trees and creating repairing buffers.
Yep.
Again, that's maybe a little risk.
They're more risky if they don't do anything.
They do, it's like a lot when they ruin it, and you get grant funding for this, it's like a pop-up.
You don't think that trees do any good?
I don't think that they give you the bang for your buck.
And straw.
Yeah, absolutely, you have no facts on that, John.
Now, why don't we tell you about facts? I just was in a, in a stormwater seminar, and there were a bunch of people in there, Jan Bowers was there, from, and I asked some specific questions about the effectiveness of these BNP's, and I got no answer at all, no reason.
It's the basin thing.
Pardon?
You're talking about the basins.
I was asking them how they determine the effectiveness of the BNP's.
Yeah.
They couldn't answer that.
Talking about trees.
Okay, well, it's supposed to do something, what's it do? How does it reduce, how does that reduce?
Think of what happens when rain falls on trees versus an open field that's just been plowed. Just think about it. The idea is to lessen it.
You've only gotta plant trees, a narrow strip of trees on each side.
Well, generally, you're talking, you're talking 50 feet of buffer on each side of the stream when you're talking about-
It's a lot of trees.
And up to 100 feet. So, you're not talking, you're not talking 30 feet of trees, you're absolutely right, you don't get anything out of that.
Don't get anything out of it.
You're talking more 50 to 100 feet of buffer, depending on landowner and what you can-
And there are landowners would be happy to have us plant trees.
And if you're talking about preserved lands, that-
It's our choice.
If they are massively owned, preserved lands, then yeah, you can design a buffer that is much greater.
I mean, we could cross and park, there's tons of open space there that we're cutting the grass every week for, you know? There's lots we can look at, guys, this is not as complicated as we're making it. But you have to dig in and work at it. I don't want every meeting to have to talk about this and have nothing yet done.
This has been going on for years.
Well, I can see why, because we're not getting anywhere, guys. You need someone, you need a couple of people to roll up their sleeves and work on it. If you trust your engineers, they can be your engineers, but you can't second-guess everything your engineers do.
Yeah, the goalposts have been moving around for a year now.
And that, that is absolutely true.
That is the one, nervousness and concern that I have with the costs that have been thrown at us, and the changing environment of requirements.
Well, John, you can't change that, you don't, you can't control that.
Well, unfortunately, that's true, but it has, it's been very frustrating.
We're gonna be responsible for the costs.
Of course, but you cannot control what the DEP is telling you to do. We have to come up with a plan and do it to the best of our ability.
I think we need to define some more of these stream, uh, bank restoration projects.
Yes, we do, but not to submit the plan.
So, could I suggest that, I mean, I think, basically, you guys, it sounds like you have three strategies outlined in the plan. The stream bank restoration, private, stormwater basin retrofits, and what we call the clean land, it's a repair. It sounds like it would probably be better to be turning it as repairing buffer restoration or establishment, right? So those would be the basic three strategies.
Can you say the name, just stop, just-
Stream bank restoration.
Basin.
So what does one person get?
The three items.
Right, stream bank restoration, stormwater basin retrofits, so that's taking the existing ones and, and, because they break down, they only work for volume, we need them to work for volume and water quality.
And what was the third?
And the third is restoring and or establishing repairing buffers.
Okay, I got you.
And, you know, what I've heard Glenn say is, well, we need, if we were to do it all in buffers, it would be 85 acres, is that what you're saying?
We need 85 acres of drainage area tributaries for that, so I think, I don't-
Gotcha, okay.
That's not to your home, that is not to your home.
It might be a thousand feet worth of stream bank, like, or something like that, you know?
So if you have a plan-
You need 85 acres of trees.
Of drained area.
Drainage area, area that drains toward-
Two buffers, and the buffer is managing 85 acres of drainage, is what that means.
It only depends on topography and everything that comes to a, like a 200-foot section of repairing buffer, how much acres? Like, you might get some 200-foot, you might get one acre of drainage, some you might get five acres of drainage, or something like that.
Now, what, if you put in these 85 acres of trees, what do we get from that?
No, you're not putting in 85 acres of trees, what you're doing is, the buffer is managing 85 acres of drain, of drain area, it's not all the trees.
I think, John, there's a difference between a tree planting effort and a repairing buffer, okay? Because at one point, we said, if you planted a quarter million trees in the township, it would, it would move the needle, but that's way too many trees, so repairing, um-
This is what I thought we were talking about, repairing buffers.
It's a little different than planting the trees like you've had at Goodland and the other-
No, these are along with stream bank.
Right, correct, so these are different.
So this is 85 acres of stream bank trees, right?
No, it's, it's, we need, look at it as a, we need to find a stream, now, if you focus on that for a minute, we need to find stream or streams with these, maybe these red categories that are on this groin, that have contributory drainage acres of 85 acres. And you might have 15 acres here, 20. So that acreage running through the repairing buffer before the stream. So you're building this buffer or wall of trees, as we'll call it, and stuff for that water filter through. So if we can find that, then that works. So, you know, so if it has a certain upstream drainage area.
What I would like to see is, is identify some additional opportunities beyond what we have right now. We have three months to do this. So I'm not saying that, I'm just not ready to submit this permit until I see a look, see some other scope developed.
Okay. Well, what I was going to say to try to maybe give it some summary. I think what, if you want to, this has been the strategy. There's a couple of ways to look at it. We can, I don't know if DEP will ever answer the questions. So.
And to a certain extent, I think we just assume what we, well, we just say we use.
Right. We have a starting point of, we'll say 79,000. And we'll just talk TMTL if that's the lion's share. Let's, one suggestion, take the 40, take half of it from the ag land or the map shed.
Okay. That's where I want to be.
That cuts us in half, and we have some land we work with Helen, I'm sorry, Helen and Shane on, okay? And then we can list between the stream bank and we have a number. We'll say the 400, we'll say half of it, we'll say 450 feet. We'll have a basin retro of X quantity, and we'll have a repairing buffer equivalent to an acreage. And submit. I'd like to get DEP to have buy-in on all that because we go through all this, we still don't know what DEP is going to say or not say.
You're never going to know what they're going to do. I don't get this, if they're seeing their behavior over the last four, five years.
He's going to start the discussion and then.
I'm going to start the discussion and have them make a decision. If we don't submit and we keep asking questions, we may never know.
Exactly.
So your choice is within the timeframe you have, though you have three months. The reality is for us to do the advertising, I hate to say it, we would need to know by April 17th, which is next month, because we have to lay it over for a month in May to advertise it for 30 days. And we have to submit by June 15th, which we won't even make. We'd have to hit the June meeting to take action. So we need to save you. We have three months, John.
Well, we got a three-month buffer, so we should have got, we should have gotten more than.
We only got a two-month extension.
We would have had to advertise last month.
Right.
So we're already in love. But step back, I think we've accomplished a lot, John. The idea of delaying it last month was brilliant, and it was brilliant. And what you've accomplished is just this whole idea of how to deal with the ag land. So I think we take, that's a good thing. Now, now we take the permit and it's going to be hazy, and I know you don't like hazy because you're an engineer. But it's going to be about having a menu. It's like a Chinese menu. And you're going to just let, you're already having it in your head. I can, I can hear you. Just laying it out. And the beauty is we've, we've found a way to reduce the load by half. That's big. And you're going to have justification. And I know I still have to write words, but you'll make the words dirty.
So, I won't apologize.
No, I'm just saying it's good. So let's not beat each other up. And I think we can. Let me just ask something. If we had submitted exactly what we had last month, would that mean we would have a greater commitment than we do now?
No.
So it didn't.
I see.
Well, if we didn't tie that. What I would say is, you could have submitted, and then we would have had the same conversation. And we would have had a public hearing and say, look, we're making our changes today.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you don't say.
You always have. So let's keep moving on this.
You always have the ability to change. The point is, this is a plan. You are not bound to it. You have the ability to change. You just have to have the public hearing to do the change.
I don't believe we needed the three-month delay, but it's fine. We're learning and let's move on. Oh, forgot to say it.
Let me just add a couple, two things that I want.
This is how government works.
Two things that I want you guys to know as board members. The University of Maryland's Maryland Finance Center is also working with the Oxford Municipalities on the Chesapeake Bay side of things, having this exact same conversation about what's happening with ag land and working with the Chesapeake County Conservation District. So if you're interested in being part of that conversation, we can keep you abreast of that conversation as that progresses as well.
Yeah, there's no downside to that.
We have funding to be able to work with those municipalities. Glenn, I told Glenn that at our meeting. So we can keep you involved in that. That funding is a pretty long project to help figure out things just like this in terms of how to meet the TMTL requirements for the Chesapeake. And that's the PRP piece.
Right.
On, on the White Clay Creek side, the other reason for the meeting was that there is a grant opportunity coming up that needs to be submitted by April 11th to allow us to continue to participate in conversations, for example, along with the Conservation District, whether it's around ag lands or dirt and gravel roads, trying to find BMP strategies to help you guys.
To lower our costs.
To find strategies that are the, yes, the best options for you from cost-effective perspective in terms of reducing the financial burden on the municipality.
I think we can all agree with that.
So if you're interested in participating in that grant opportunity, we just need to work that out with Joan and have you guys, you know, work with us on that application for, it's a lot of the government requirement. Joan is just made, basically presenting in-kind match. We don't even need any cash match for this, I don't think, at this point.
Great.
Because they are allowing us to use engineering time as a match.
That's a no lose.
So I want to see the language that excludes this farm land written down somewhere.
It doesn't say.
We're going to create that for you.
Yeah, that's what I want to see then. Because I don't want to walk out of here and just submit this thing.
It will be language that says a strategy for how we will be reducing the pollute load. It will not exclude, we cannot exclude that farmland. I just don't want you to walk out of here thinking that, that word will be in there. It will not be in there.
Just think strategy.
We cannot parse it out. We cannot exclude it. But we can have a strategy that says, this is how that load will be addressed that does not cost the township any money.
Okay. Let's just leave it at that. That's, all right. So is there anything else that we need to accomplish today?
Well, I just want to make one other comment. I, I do enjoy these conversations, and I, I, we have to take a vote on it, but I want.
I'm not ready to vote on this.
No, no, take a vote on this one. I'm going to say now that we continue to work on this as a board. I don't, I don't want to sub team.
I, I think this board has to do some homework on its own. I don't think everybody needs to be.
What do you think the three-month extension is supposed to do?
John, we're already.
Well, I thought you already said, Nancy, that, that we should go with what the engineers recommend.
For the submission, we could go with exactly what we did last month. Not a thing would have to change.
Well, I just.
Except for the, yes.
We just went through it, Donna.
No, I think, I think we're going to make a submission change.
We will create a strategy that we submit. It doesn't change our initial submission.
Definitely.
It does.
We have a submission.
We have changed it. It's a good, we have changed our strategy.
I'd rather have the submission done as good as possible.
You're going to have to, well, you have one month then.
That extra two months we just got means that we don't have to have a public hearing and raise more of our done, as you said.
But you said.
I want to use the two-month period.
You got one month, guys. You got one month because you have to advertise. So what do you want to do in a month?
How do we get, again, we got a three-month extension. We only get a one-month gap. How does that, how does that add up?
Our permit was due the end of April. They gave us until June 15th.
We asked for more.
We only have a two-month extension. It said three months.
We asked for three, but you didn't get it.
We got two.
We have two.
Now, the email we had from.
That.
Does, does give us a.
She said it must be April. Now it's going to be June, so.
So when do we want to advertise, John?
Why we can't vote on this on May.
It has to be after 30 days.
Okay. So May, whatever our meeting is in May, which if it's after the 15th, it's too late.
Right, so the way we looked at it was, you'd have to, in scenario X, let's say you have to do anything. April 17th, I would be looking at, asking for authorization to advertise.
Okay. So we got a month, folks. What do you want to do with your month?
I want to work on it.
Well, good. We'll work on it, learn about it, and then we'll come back and we'll talk about it. Do the work outside of the meeting so that when we come to the meetings, we all have a shared understanding.
But I think we're there. I mean.
I think we're very, what we're trying to be about doing is rewriting a pageant.
John's not there.
Out of the narrative to allow the flexibility, more flexibility and accountability ag land. So this becomes, again, a calculated strategy. Your choices are to perhaps, you know, do nothing and see what happens. I don't recommend that, of course. Be the first to go back in, in the consortium here with a plan and see what happens. And that's a calculated decision to go back in. We'll see what DEP says, but worst case they do is tell you, hey, you know what? We don't buy this, and they give you a letter, and then we go back to the drawing board again. But at least we submit the submission. So that's a calculated strategy.
All right.
Or we can keep asking questions, keep asking for time extensions.
Which is ridiculous.
And, and so I see three strategies. You pick which one you like the best. I think we've honed in. So I kind of think we're on track with a little bit more work till the April meeting to circulate some tax, work with elements, and, and hone that down.
I don't like the third option because the third option, then we're, we're, we come across looking like we're not committed to this. And then if we need favors down the road, we may not get them.
I think that's a good point.
I think you get into analysis prone analysis. We're never going to have all of our information. So at some point, we have to just put it in, see what they say, learn from what they tell us, and move on. That's my choice.
But I think we're, as you said, the next step I would expect would be some tax, and we'll get to review it.
Correct. We can circulate that in advance. Of course, I don't have to update a couple of maps here and then do some other stuff in the book for what DEP is going to look at. That's not making it interesting to you guys.
No, I think the other thing I'd like to see is some, identify some other stream opportunities.
Well, I agree. I think the ones.
But that would be, that's what this map is for.
Yeah, we can look at.
But that would be a side thing because you would be there for the, do we let you know we're there for the program?
Not necessarily, but it would give me a level of comfort if you had some.
We don't stay in the streams, do we?
Well, what I would say is, the, um, the more options you have in your plan, like if you develop enough information about, say, four stream bank restoration projects, then, and, and you know you only need to do two, you don't have to come back and do a public hearing then. If you pick, if only one more, so the more opportunities you put in there.
You put in the better.
Yeah, I want to avoid this.
Less likely you'll come back to a public hearing if you're going to change some aspects of the plan.
So to speak on that point, and this is one of the other points I wanted to bring up. You know, this map, and again, this is a wonderful map by the conservancy. There are, we'll say, one, two, three, four, also the main red areas on this map, okay? I would like.
These are named paired streams?
No.
No.
These are just repairing opportunities unprotected. So with the theory that this is all good and should be permissible, we could, A, look at the drainage areas coming into these.
Right, you got to get your.
One, two, three, or four of these areas. One. Number two would be, I think it'd be good to reach out to these homeowners or property.
Yeah, and look at Jay Brown. He has this huge one. Maybe he'll do it.
Yeah, he may be a, he may be a tough sell, but.
Jay Brown, he's so cheerful.
But what I don't want to do, once you would put this out to the public, I don't want to say a stream restoration on property X without having at least talked about it.
Yeah, I agree.
And have a verbal.
It's pointless to.
Part of this process is the township could reach out to these four, there are only four.
Well, we, yeah.
And, and just have a verbal, say, hey, we're contemplating this for the township for, do a little background. And at least I'd like to have buy-in.
Sure.
For example, you own the preserve, no permission necessary other than.
That's, that's one thing that's good about that.
Correct. I love that. So I'm not, I'm not letting go of that. I know Shane only likes a little bit of portion of that, but I'm not letting go of the preserve. On the guy on P Still Road, Mr. Weitzel, Joan has talked with him, so. That's a PRP, nevertheless. When we, when we say we have a P Still Road property, we have some level of comfort that the owner is interested.
Yes.
And it's not going to surprise us.
The basin retrofits we don't have, we have to talk to the old HOAs, but we can't contact 25.
That's a huge headache. I wouldn't.
And I think that's the most expensive option we've got.
That's a plan B.
So that is something, don't put it in your plan, but that is something that we can address with the grant funding. Is we can start a process of reaching out to the HOAs about the stormwater basin retrofits and figuring out who's interested in doing them and then seeking funding to do the basin retrofits. So that's the kind of thing that we would like to be able to do with that grant funding.
It's expensive and it's got a lot of hurdles.
It's much less expensive than doing stream bank restoration projects. And in the outcome, if these are on private land, then ideally what you have is you have a situation where, I mean, you've got these, we've got these basins out there anywhere. Those HOAs are supposed to be maintaining those basins. Ideally, what you'd like to have, I'm going to say.
You're asking them to change the design. You're not asking them to just scrape it out now.
That's why we would seek grant funding to do the retrofit part. But after it's done, then we should have in place a maintenance agreement where the HOA is keeping up that basin.
I think you got a better chance of getting the landowner permission to a basin than rather than a stream.
Well, NP, didn't it say we would have to do like 16 to 25 basins, and each one is like 85 grand?
Yeah, we, I think we were in the roughly 20 range. We maybe thought you got 25 or just, I mean, at least you have 25 in, in, but they haven't been evaluated.
It's much cheaper than doing.
The engineering to look at all those. Again, I'm trying to balance how much upfront.
How much is a true basin?
Yeah.
But you use 25 grand streams.
At least. 25 to 40 grand a basin are some average numbers.
I'm sure. How are they coming up with that number?
Is that, is that even the 50% reduction?
No.
That ain't.
No, that would be, that's, the 20, 20, 20 basins was the normals in East Dallas.
So it would be 400, 10 times.
Right.
When you said 200 dollars, it's for a linear.
That's true.
Many restoration over from, folks like that.
That's a construction. The point being, you have a, you have a system out there already of these HOA-owned stormwater basins. We have to see them function better than they do.
Boy.
From a watershed, a circle. The point is, that's something we would like to be pursuing. It's this private landowner piece that's very hard for you guys to do. It's not, quite frankly, what municipality, you know, you don't have a lot of time to be reaching out to all these individual landowners.
See, the, the. HOAs have an obligation to maintain these already. So I think that's fertile ground to, to do those, but they don't seem to give us much.
In terms of the pollute mode reduction, I understand that.
They don't give us much.
The point is that that's, that work is really fundable. It's not that hard to get support to do that work.
The grants are nice, but I, I wouldn't bet my anything on them giving you a grant.
I hear what you're saying, Ellen, and, and we'll, I understand what you're saying.
So this is based on our experience working with municipalities across Pennsylvania and what gets funded and what doesn't get funded. Storm basin retrofits get funded. Stream bank restoration projects are much more challenging to get funded because it really does depend on where they are and how you have attenuated the flow upstream In terms of using state dollars to get that stuff. So, my only point is, having a menu of options that allows you to do a bunch of different things. We'll do, you know, what we're interested in doing is doing that HOA piece, we'll help you figure that out. If there's a great stream bank restoration project, and we've got, you know, we can put that into a growing greener grant, We'll do, you know, that's the kind of stuff we can help figure out.
We have to be flexible.
All I'm saying is, don't leave out some of your options.
Okay.
There are things that we think that we can be able to support through grant funding.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna continue to work this thing, so I'm probably going to be talking to you guys next week.
Yeah, we, we come down for a little staff meeting, we'll have some back and forth.
Now, I, now I, I got a better understanding of what's going on.
I do too, Mr. Chairman, but There's still a lot of nebulous here.
It always has been.
And I'm with you, and, and maybe it's because you're an engineer and I'm a pilot, but I like to have defined lines. I don't like nebulous, well, maybe, and sort of, and it could be, that doesn't, that doesn't, it's like, don't even talk if you're gonna say that.
I don't care about the words.
I need to know what is required, what do we have to do, and, and, you know, who, how's it going to be accepted? And what does it do? What does it, what does it change? And, and when you said that you, no one can even define what's being changed, what, what's, that really boils my blood.
Well, there are ways to determine how
The issue we have is that you have a regulatory agency that is just, you can't figure them out. We, we don't really know what they want.
The way I look at it, what it does, no disrespect to anybody, I don't care, because the ball is always moving, everything, everything keeps moving. Because we don't, nothing is measured, we're not, there's no, no one is measuring, no one is looking upstream to figure out, wow, who's actually doing the polluting and any of that stuff. All I care about is figuring out, what is the lowest cost way to do this, so we can check the box.
To get as far as we can on doing what we need to do.
That's all I care about. The lowest cost, I understand, the way I do it is the five hundred feet times two hundred dollars, which is a hundred, what, how much is that? Hundred thousand, the storm restoration, even with the reduction, and we have ten or twelve stormwater basins that we need to do, That's still a five hundred thousand dollar number.
Yeah, so just entirely, you just put in the plan anyway, so it's there.
Right, my point, and that's exactly the point. Go ahead and create that flexibility for yourselves, because we think we can get some money to do
Get some money, it's cheaper.
And if we can, then at least it reduces the amount of stream bank restoration projects that you have to do. Right? That's our goal, what we want to see is projects that are good for the watershed, good for water quality, And, and reduce the burden on you guys in terms of what the municipality has to do. And to the extent we can accomplish that, and reduce what you would need to do from the stream bank erosion side, unless there's a, you know, like, unless there's a project out there, it's like, oh, this would be the perfect project, We'd be all on board for that.
You know, at some point, to talk to the board, we're gonna have to figure out how to fund this stuff. Right now, I don't have the
Well, twenty thousand years, I think would be too bad, if we could do that. There's not a lot on
Twenty thousand.
So, so ideally, well, I mean, we can have that
I like that funding's not your issue, but we
No, funding is my, you know, it's the Arco Finance Center, that's what I do
I don't like, I like an idea of grants, but I wouldn't bet anything on it.
So, but that, John, that's part of taking a broader, a broader approach throughout the watershed
I'm not telling you not to do it, but I just don't have
You can't rely on them.
Yeah, that's the word.
No, because I, and I would never, and I would never say to you that you will be able to do a hundred percent of this with grants. What you want to do is start a program with grants, and then, and that helps you figure out how you're gonna do the financing. But what I will tell you is that I think there are strategies that we could pursue, that will reduce the burden on the municipalities. And that's what I think is most
Okay.
So we're up to, for the MS4 permit, for publicly sharing it, we have to be prepared at the April meeting To know what we want to publicly advertise.
We should be, we should agree it.
So by April, our April meeting, we have to have what we're gonna advertise. We have to talk it through and agree with it, okay?
And I'm, I'm gonna have a discussion in April, but by the end, but by the end of the meeting in April, we'll have
It's going to advertise.
So there could be some text updates or minor adjustments or something like that, so the
So we'll, so we'll be very close.
So we know what they call posted
I want that for, for the engineers, this verbiage to, to define this somewhat, this exemption, I'll just use the word exemption.
It's in a box, a quick in a box, man.
And the other, and the other, I'd like to see, identify a couple of other opportunities for stream restoration.
Okay, I think those are on the map already, so I think Johnny, I would recommend that the township staff reach out to those four entities. Have a good connection, if that's okay.
This one, if these farms are already on board, aren't they
I think they would be. I don't know if anyone's talked to them, but it sounds like
Which farm?
If you had Paul Overton, they seem to like him, it seems like
The King Farm.
That would be a good, a good farm to talk to, yes.
It's up in the area, because it's southern one.
They're all right by the bridge, we were just talking.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say
We should have traded for that bridge. I was gonna say, we've got that guy there, we could have traded a basin for it.
I was, yeah, I didn't want them to be, I was gonna say, yeah, let's choose a proper restoration
This range for the three different options, or four different options?
Well, we already have stream bank numbers that were provided by the Red Clay, and they've done, that's historic data from the Epi projects. So, that one, the one to two hundred dollars a foot is the high-low range, and the suggestion was use the two hundred a foot for starters. For the basin retro, I believe Joan, we gave some information to Joan, if your colleague works was looking into generally what that might be. I just think thirty, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars is out of the range, when you don't know anything about it. That's what I would do. Now, I would ask for Shane with this repairing, restore, establishment thing, per linear foot, based on historic data, maybe she can throw some numbers?
I can add numbers.
Yeah, if you could conclude that in
I'm not gonna put it in the actual
No, no, no. That's option three.
So, but then, at the end of the day, I think that, to help you guys, you, you go back to the three choices, is to do nothing, Make a decision and submit knowing you may get a, a letter back, and that's enough, the end of the world, or just keep waiting. Pick, pick one of those three, whichever you might
I think we're in the two, I think we're in the two to submit.
We just have to move forward with this.
But we want to have as much into the submission as possible, I, I'm with you, John. We want to be as well educated, as well prepared, and, and have the better plan
Alright, so, I'm gonna work with these guys, just, because I'm gonna actively get into this thing now, I understand it.
True.
What, what, we have to be back to us before, so
We're gonna be ahead of the April meeting.
The board has to do this, we can't, you know.
I'm saying, we all have to get educated when we're there.
Are you on vacation or anything, or you're
Not only these meetings. Should we move on?
I would think within a week or two, John, or as quick as we can, we'll get you some text updates. Get some of the other stuff, if you can provide that, whatever the time
Can you find my agenda here? I've got some pieces of paper here.
We're on the township cleanup.
Oh, wait, sorry, before we made that, we did want to, I just asked
I do have some questions for
Whether we needed to have your support for participating in the grant up there.
Here's, that's the next question I'm asking.
Want to say that, or just say yes?
The next question is, We're, we're involved in this cost sharing plan that you had presented to us, and we've got a couple thousand dollars in that.
Right.
Okay, so right now, none of this stuff seems to fall into this category, right? We're not gonna be able to get any cost sharing from anybody else.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what, what you mean
Well, the word this was presented to us, that we put up two thousand dollars
Right.
For your consulting effort, to help us find other townships that would share the cost of a common project. Not necessarily in our township or their township, but it was a cost sharing thing. So, is, is any of those opportunities developed?
So we're in a position now where we have, we've had two years of trying to figure out what had to go into this permit, Which took a lot longer, as we all know, than we, any of us wanted. All of the municipalities now are at the point of finally getting a much better picture of what they need to do.
Okay, so no, no opportunities have presented ourselves, right?
They didn't need to.
They, because nobody has submitted their permit applications, nobody has had to say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, right? So you guys now have a much better picture of what pollution reductions you need, so does London Grove, they're getting to that point too.
Alright, so the next, the next question is, how are you funded?
How am I funded?
How are you funded?
Through grants.
Through grants, because we don't, the only we put out is two thousand dollars.
And the water, and us.
And that was used to leverage another grant that brought in a hundred thousand dollars.
A grant from the state of Pennsylvania?
No, not, no, that was from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation Foundation.
Okay, so you're working on grants?
The National Fish and Wildlife Federation, something by the federal government.
Some of that money is federal dollars.
Okay.
Shane, the same question.
Increasing our national debt for this.
I am funded through the National Park Service, contracted for the White Lake Watershed Association. We get appropriations from the federal government to implement the watershed management plan. To me, this is a strategy, working with municipalities to improve water quality, which is part of our management plan.
Do you get any direct funding at all from any of the townships?
Um, well, depends, if I'm working on a project with them, yes, not for my salary, but for matches, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood where, where the funding's coming from.
Yeah, I think our national debt is increasing exponentially, not because of these two. Because of the whole You tricked that, you tricked that.
I'm giving a blundering about grants, my perspective is, there's grand dollars out there. I don't see any reason not to bring those grand dollars to this watershed. And when there are opportunities to do that, that will help reduce the burden for you guys, in order to meet your MS4 obligations, I'm more than happy to help figure that out. And if that, we can't use these grand dollars to actually implement the projects, but what we can use these grand dollars to do Is to further refine the strategy, so that then we can apply to growing greener, to get the money to implement the projects. So that's, you know, that's the perspective that I try to bring to this, I, I, you know, I appreciate that we have a debt, I understand what you're, you know, why that's not very appealing to you. But I also feel like if the dollars are out there, why not make the burden this one?
These are new dollars, this is not something we have in the budget.
This is new dollars.
This is not something
No, but what we're asking for in terms of the grant support, does not require any match from you guys in terms of dollars, it's just in kind.
But I mean, for this overall, all this MS4 requirements, we actually start moving dirt and doing things. There are real dollars involved in this thing, and we don't have anything in the budget for that now.
Right, I fully understand that.
But you look at the high budget Because it can't all be grant funded, they can't do all their projects with grant funding, you do, you do need to put money for it.
Right, but that's why looking at things like the dirt, the low volume road program is really actually very important, Because it provides fifty percent of the dollars to implement those VMPs.
What's negative about working with Joan on finding applications for grant, I mean, what would be the negatives?
I don't see any negative, I, I don't see any negative, and so if you guys, you know, I mean, it's entirely up to you guys. We are hoping to work with Franklin, with London Grove, with New, uh, New London, London Britain, and West Grove has gotten back to us as well. The idea would be to have the grant funding, so that we have these similar strategies that we'd be talking about on behalf of all those municipalities. The ag, talking about that ag piece with the conservation district, talking about the low volume road piece, How many projects can we identify in White Lake, there are low volume road projects. You know, those, having these same conversations with respect to all of the municipalities.
Does that make, I mean, I'm thinking out loud here, but if we all decide to go after the grant money, And we are also at the beginning stages, stages of having a consortium with various townships, Why would it make sense for one township, for four townships to have grant funding and one not, working together as consortium?
That's, we'd like to continue to have you guys work together as a consortium, we think it, one, improves your chances of getting that grand dol, those grand dollars, Two, it helps you leverage your money that you can put into these projects more effectively. And three, I think, what we also know is coming down the pipe, is that Penn Vest, for example, is looking at how to fund projects On more of a watershed or programmatic basis, and so working across municipalities is only gonna Give you more opportunities to access those kind of programs.
And all the, all the other townships that are part of this consortium, they have, they don't have disparate goals, they're all, they all have the same goals.
Yeah, because they all have the same, it's all, White Lake Creek has the same inheritance throughout all the municipalities, it's all about
I think we beat this thing up enough.
But, thank you, I mean, I don't appreciate
Well, we need to, we need to know whether you're willing to have Joan participate in the grant application or not.
Yes, yes.
There's no downside, so go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes?
I agree with you, I don't want to give it any downside.
We're gonna, we're gonna do the, to help her do the grants, we're gonna work with
Yeah, there's no money in our, we don't have
Yeah, we don't need a new cash net, just
We don't want the grants, saying it's okay to work with Joan to do the grants.
That was previously, those are the used by Irish cats.
Now, and you let Joan do it much now?
Yeah, she just, she just needs to okay, because that's
Well, we just have to show some
By April.
Alright. I think we beat this thing up.
It's, it's
Yeah, do we have this interest vote?
No, I think we also just
No, just call it out a hour ago. Grants money.
Well, I know that.
She says grant, is that where it comes from?
Okay, if you can make that point, but it won't change anything, and I agree with you.
We need help to get this thing going.
John, in all, in all, I'm just gonna give you a final comment. In all the years that I've been on this board, and we've gotten involved in all kinds of complex and messy issues, There's nothing, it's as complex as this board, that is messy and as complex as this thing, and is difficult to define. That's just my perspective. Paul, you've been here for a while, you've seen some of the stuff, is there anything we've ever done that comes close to this?
Well, I don't know, I don't usually sit there writing them, but I do have one quick question, by the way, with all these experts here. So I was taking a walk on the trail the other day, and I know that you're now getting pulled into the issues with Elk And Chesapeake as well, correct? So
Township, you're saying?
No.
No, three quarters of seven.
So, do, do past projects that stopped silt count for something?
Yes.
Because, you know, the trails got that big old basin That definitely stopped, it's ag land, it definitely stopped what was a major silt problem one summer.
You mean right here or walk the last
Right here or what?
They won't let us use it, why not?
Pete wasn't down
That was a huge project.
It was a big project, which was, it was devastating silt
It's a huge problem, yeah.
Right. You questioned, why you can't take credit for Shad, off Walker Road, that basin.
Wasn't it a wet lake in there?
No, no, that's, no, wasn't that one. It was, it was ag, it was agricultural flooding that brought silt across the road and down
Yeah, so it's just your base load now.
Alright, hold on a second on this one.
Oh, that was good.
Why don't you guys answer that at the next meeting?
Yeah, there was, I was just wondering, I was curious about
Yeah, to generically answer your question, Paul, we, we, we've worked tirelessly to try to find all the VMPs that are out there, And that's not easy to do when you're trying to math the math the first time through, and you can always find something else. We asked a lot of questions, we tried to take credit for everything that's out there. Some of those, based upon the time when it was built, the answer was no, it was too old, even though, I love Walker Shad, that was one of the things we had talked about, But we asked that question specifically, and we were shot down for some of these things.
I guess the point of looking is our settlement would be higher, if we hadn't done
There's only a lot of proposed VMPs, since the VMP is already installed, it doesn't account as, as an offset. Yeah, so, that sucks, I don't have a better answer for it.
But our numbers would be worse if we hadn't done that, so yippee for us.
Well, you're not getting anything for it.
You're not getting any credit.
Not getting any credit.
My fingers, I think we deserve credit for that, because that was a major
It stopped a huge problem.
It moved mud across the road, we had a corneburger on the other side of the road, because it took, you know, enormously
Right, so, alright, so we're not gonna give credit for
We're not gonna solve that, thank you.
We can have sidebar discussion with Helen about some of that stuff, to see if she can move me over, it's really puzzled why that's not included.
Well, it should reduce your base load, yeah.
Well, it did, I, don't, when, when was our base load set?
Nine to five, and then it's done.
Oh, well then it definitely should have.
No, they only, there's an offset, it's not, it's not located within
Oh, it's not your
It's not in your
Oh, right.
Alright, alright, that answers it.
It's not a big area, okay.
So yes, it was a big problem, it was good for water quality, but it
You guys are all coming back in April.
Yeah.
We love to We certainly care.
Count on, count on.
Thank you, guys.
Do you need us anymore, or are we
I think you guys are good, go ahead.
Thank you, guys.
Keep in touch, thanks.
Okay, one, five E. Wrong location.
Well, no, it's in the right location.
We did the right thing. I don't know where we're at, but I'll just do, the township cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight to noon, with the rain date of Sunday, and there is a lot of trash out there. April fourteenth, from eight to noon, this is a Saturday, the township's helping cleanup.
It's a good program, we've done it, and every year they come back, most of them have some trash.
It's just the trash this year is unbelievable.
And Jim, Jim Derazio, um, gives us a dump truck if any
No, yeah, I remember, I'll be there, I'll be there.
It's incredible.
And we get
I saw some trash today, it was close to my house.
Pardon me?
I saw some trash today, it was close to my house, just probably fell off somebody's truck, but people can be such sloths.
Eight forty-one is disgusting.
Sometimes, you know, if garbage goes out, a high wind day
Exactly, the recyclables especially.
And the wind is high, because the last time we had a really high wind day, there was a trampoline, I don't know where it started at, But it ended up in the vineyard, on the Wilkinson property. And I sent it up, because I, I know the vineyards, I sent it up.
It's just an incredible problem. I mean, I've had, somebody parked in my driveway, had a McDonald's lunch, and that's over the jump right there.
Oh, yeah.
Daily.
Thanks again for much, yeah.
I haven't seen their stuff lately, I'm sure they're living somewhere else.
Anyway, it's a good, it's a good program, we always get a lot, we always get a lot of participation. So, and Jeff got a little signs out this week.
Oh, you know what, guys, is that the date of the Great Gravel Crusher? That's, the vineyard, we have a lot of cyclists out there today. That's, I think that's when Paradox does the
It's on Saturday, is that theirs?
Might be it.
Well, we can do this in the morning, and then go over to Paradox, get drunk in the afternoon.
Oh, come on, I don't see it, I'm making two.
Well, I'm doing, I'm gonna sign up for that, that's my
From cleaning the cars
Okay.
Alright, let's see, alright, the next item is a zoning issue. We've had these, I'll just kind of outline it quickly. We have two, I'm gonna talk about one of these zoning issues, the other one I'm gonna talk about in the exact section. And these zoning issues, it's, one's related to this TMD, Which is no longer a TMD, because now that land has all been preserved as ag land. So, we have to change our zoning map, and eliminate the TMD, I think that's gonna be the answer. And the question is, what do we have to do with high-density ozone? So, I don't have that answer, so, I engaged a, a planner, a guy named Wayne Grafton came in here. He's come strongly recommended by one of the township tour supervisors in Houston. Found him to be extremely helpful, and Joan and I interviewed him in here one day. Joan, when did we talk to Wayne? One day, it was last week?
Last week, uh, last Thursday.
And, this guy's incredibly knowledgeable.
Well, you want him to do the comprehensive plan?
Not yet, not yet, we gotta fix this first.
Okay.
So that's, that's the issue, is we're gonna get into the comprehensive plan, but these two zoning issues have to be resolved before, I didn't even talk to you about it before, but So, we talked to him, and he has, I believe, the capability to come up with a solution for us. He doesn't know what it is, but his credentials say that he should be able to help us. So then I asked him, I said, well, how do I engage you without getting into a contract? I said, I wanna engage you on a single unit basis, an hourly basis, and he says, that's the way I prefer to go. So, the proposal is, to engage this guy on an hourly basis, he's, he's got high rates, they're all
How much are those rates?
They all got high rates, he's a planner, he's got all that planning Her financials
Hundred fifty bucks an hour?
It's a hundred fifty and a hundred twenty-five, principal with one fifty, senior with one twenty-five, planner's a hundred. But, the guy, the guy came across as extremely knowledgeable, and I was pretty happy, and the alternate that I would consider Is that other young woman that was in here before, Natasha Mandak. She was a star, I was really impressed by that person. But I think Wayne's got local knowledge, and she doesn't. So, based on the fact that we have a strong recommendation from the two London Grove supervisors, One's the chair, and the other's, was the chair the previous year. one's the chair and the other was the chair previous year, then I would like to ask the board to try to engage this guy and see what he comes up with.
How much do you want to spend?
I don't know. But we're going to ask him to do.
Joan, this is not like you. You just have to open the book. We just reviewed about fifteen hundred bucks.
That's where, I said, okay, do I want to give him a contract? No, because I don't.
You can bring him in for an hour to our, and have a conversation with him.
So Joan, is this that complicated? How do we, how do we do the last half?
All right, okay, let's back up here.
That requires a lot of money and grant money, how to pay for it, it's like, I think we've got forty thousand dollars in grants.
Here's, here's the stick. We've got this TMD, which is a, which is a zoning area that was created way back in. Early days when I think Teddy Price was on the board. And it really tries to recreate a Philadelphia neighborhood developed in the 1920s. And I lived in one of those in Philadelphia. So they have an alley in the back with a garage, and then no parking up front, just street parking. But it's real high dense stuff. I don't know how many houses they have proposed, three, four hundred houses in it.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
More than that.
So hundreds of thousands.
Townhouses, single family, commercial.
Right here?
It's in the.
Was this supposed to be McMester?
Yeah.
Yep.
So there were multiple development tracks that were part of the global deal with the developers, and part of that deal, not only did it deal with sewage, but we enacted a TMD that would have allowed them to build a hundred thousand, a commercial and a hundred, I can't remember.
Anyway, and Mark, we can't just eliminate it?
Well, I'll let John speak to it.
I, I think if we, if we just eliminate it, then we're, we could possibly be sued with a curative amendment that we don't have enough high density. That's how Lexington Point got started.
Right, it's full of fair share.
I want to get a professional planner, who's got the credentials, to come up with a solution of how we do that. What we, how do we manage it? Do we have to designate some other area as an offset? I don't know. But I just don't think we can just pull it out there.
And the townships don't have lessons learned? We have to, they can't tell us how they do it? Without hiring this guy?
Yeah, see, it's based, it's based on population and everything, there's percentages, I mean, it's.
It is fairly complex. And I've been putting it off for years, quite frankly. It's been hanging out there for years. And what's driving it is at some point we need to review our comprehensive plan. I don't see a whole lot of work in that plan when we actually get to it, but this stuff has to be done first.
It's just, I'm afraid we could spend ten grand on this. I don't want to spend ten grand on that.
Then what do you want to do?
I want to talk to the other townships, and I want to talk to people who have been through it. I'll talk to the past board members.
No, we're talking about, this isn't the comprehensive plan update.
This is just the TMD.
This is just the.
This is all of them we'll get into in the.
This is an issue that we've been discussing on and off for.
This is going on for years. It's just, we've been putting it off and putting it off, and I just thought we're going to need to come up with some resolution, with some professional help. I don't think we can solve this ourselves, that's my opinion.
I mean, it's called a fair share analysis. There's case law that has been developed over thirty years that says that each township has to, has to provide for a certain amount of high density, middle density type of housing. We can't just zone, you know, farm fields for the whole township and prevent anyone from living here. So that was the TMD. Those parcels have since been preserved as, you know, farms, and so they're kind of not, you know, someone could say, well, you know, you zone for TMD, but you really don't provide for it, so.
We're vulnerable right now to a curative amendment.
But to really zone an area means the people living in that area, that isn't what they signed up for.
Well, we may not have to, that's what we want to find out, because we have to.
One of the most controversial things that a township can do, this is quite a massive zoning thing. Because you're essentially going to change the value of somebody's land or some neighbor's land. You're not going to make anybody happy. There's no doubt about that. But I don't see, I, I need some professional help. Now, will he accept his recommendation? I don't know. But what I would ask him to do is to do a couple, do a week's worth of work and then come back to us at some point.
At a hundred fifty bucks an hour? Dang, I'm not ready for that.
It wouldn't have to be forty hours with the work.
Not, and not with these work sessions.
Are you going to bring him into the board then, and talk to him?
Yeah, for sure. And between now and then, I want to talk to a couple people.
Go, just go ahead.
There's no way I would use my own money on this.
Night meetings.
No way.
A work session is three hundred and fifty bucks.
I see that.
We're probably paying.
Planning meetings, three seventy-five.
You're handsome.
That's four hundred.
I'm not ready to commit to that. No way.
Well, it's a focus.
Well, it's involved. I mean, when you talk to him, what do you say? These seem like, hate to say, these seem like, you know, three, four, five, bullpointed questions that he could answer, and then yes or no, if it's yes, we have to do this, if it's no, then. I mean, there might be precedents set by other townships that do not have, have the land, and this could be a five hour.
Then it's great. Then I'm fine with that.
I'm just trying to understand the scope of this really is.
It's basically, this is based on calculations that have to be made. So it's an analysis of the township. That, that's the first thing he has to do, to come up with these percentages and say you have to have so much AR, you have to have so much.
So we'd have to give him some background documents.
Well, he, he.
I gave him a lot of stuff.
Then we would ask the question, right?
And then he could say, well, you're fine, don't worry about it. You don't need anything.
Based on the.
The answer to the question would be, if you eliminate the TMD, because we know that it doesn't necessarily provide an outlet for that type of development, because the properties are under ag easement. What other areas are zoned high density residential? And is that enough? Do we need more? It's a fairly discreet question.
So does that going to take a week to answer?
I couldn't tell you. I, I don't believe that it's going to take forty hours.
So what if we, what if we?
Hey, Dave.
We formulate a question, and then.
Ask him to tell us.
We've got the question out there. We need, the question is, what, what do we have to do in an offset, if any, by removing this TMD and just making it AR? It is AR. We'll have to, eventually we'll have to change the.
And he has the background documents and asks her to put a few hours work in then.
All right, let's, let's put a few questions to him, and see if we can define how many hours he needs and bring it back next month. I mean, it's been sitting here for two or three years, so.
What was the TMD zone before it was TMD?
I don't know.
That's a good question.
It was probably AR, but I, I don't.
They turned it into TMD.
No, I think, I think that was a commercial zoning district.
All of that?
Well, that's where it was going to be a shopping center and.
But that's part of the TMD.
That's when they turned it.
I didn't think it extended. I mean, there used to be kind of village commercial at one time, I thought.
See, it wasn't, a big chunk of that was the McMaster farm, so that was probably more.
So it was why they created TMD in order to justify.
Yes.
What was going to go in there. So it may, it may be that the answer is you don't have to probably.
It was a special zoning district created by the supervisors.
That's a good point. If it was not, if it was.
If it wasn't originally.
If it was not the TMD originally, that means that before it was TMD, we passed. They were planted in the township before that TMD was created for a massive shopping center and, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail and houses. And then there were negotiations with all of the, there were like four or five developers, and there were negotiations at the time. There was determination. TMD is kind of like the, the danger of things and land uses. This is what we want developments to look like at least then. And so the township said, well, zone for this, if you agree that you're not going to, you know, build all these shopping centers here. That was a big concern for folks, so it was a concerted effort to do that. And now those agreements with all of those developers are no longer in place, so the TMD just sits really kind of without a purpose.
Does it, by having a TMD and not stirring the pot, does that satisfy whoever this Pennsylvania planning group is that says, oh, yeah, Franklin Township has a TMD, but they may not know that it's preserved?
Well, there's, there's, you know, I've argued cases before court, and we'll see if, I should be getting a decision soon. But the theory is, if you zone for a use and then something happens, something intervenes, like someone puts this property under agricultural easement, through no fault of the township, we didn't do anything, we zoned for TMD, that we can't be held liable for our zoning ordinance being, you know, illegal, so to speak, we're not providing a fair share. That's, it's a theory, and we'll see if, if it becomes law.
I mean, thanks for just let this go. I mean, we don't have anyone breathing down our necks. And I think there's a point to stirring the pot.
Not yet, but we, we already have, we already have one lawsuit already. That's how we got Lexington Point.
What was that lawsuit?
It was, it's called a, it's called a curative amendment. Essentially, they come to you and say, your zoning is exclusionary, doesn't provide enough of this type of zoning. We're going to cure it for you.
The builder wanted to put more houses there than the normal.
That's right.
That's right.
First, you got to find a piece of land that someone wants to develop.
You're vulnerable, you're vulnerable to it with having this piece of land that's, that is designated high density. The TMD is high density.
So can I buy a piece of land on eight ninety-six that we all know what we're talking about? And say, I want a TMD, and then put two hundred homes there?
Man, it's already zoned.
Potentially.
It's, it's zoned for eighty homes.
Anyway, I could say that your township does not, does not allow for identity. I don't want to put it in.
You can hypothetically.
Snake dung.
We can hypothetically, we can hypothetically argue this thing back and forth, back and forth. But our opinions will not carry any weight unless you get a professional planner to help you. I don't know, Mark, what do you think, Mark?
I think for a project like this, you have to have the advice of a planner.
Planner, because there's going to be a whole lot.
That's what they do.
Just ask the question, we'll see where they go.
There are four or five planners in Chester County, Wayne Grafton's one of them. They're all pretty similar, I think.
When we, Joan, any idea what we spent on the original comprehensive plan, which is, that was.
I, I think we got, I think we got, I have to double check, so please don't hold me in this, but like I was describing, we got forty thousand dollars in grant money to pay for it, so you know it was more than that.
It was, I mean, you look at the book.
Someone said Teddy Price did.
It paid for all of it?
Most of it.
Okay. Well, it was at least forty thousand, but we did get grant money to pay for that.
So it's, it's big money. I think, I think we need some professional help here. I don't know. We can delay it, because it's been sitting around for a few years, but I'm concerned that at some point I put a cap on it.
That's my problem. I don't want to spend six grand in one week.
No, no, you, we said, ask the question, and give, ask, we're going to know, do you how long it will take.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and the MPC. The MPC can tell us, this is how long it will take. It will take three hours, it'll take six hours.
It can't be that complicated to tell us the answer. It's not going to take forty hours.
All right, let's.
So the MPC requires that the township, every township consider updates to its comprehensive plan every ten years.
Oh, it's time, yeah.
Joan, the, the last time that was done was in two thousand nine.
Yes.
Two thousand nine.
We're not required to do it, but most, yeah, most municipalities set up a task force and then they review it. So this would be part of that, that type of review.
What would lead, if you, it would lead into correcting that they are updating the comprehensive plan, but I don't think we can mess with the comprehensive plan to be solve these zoning issues. My own personal.
Well, he may tell us we don't have to do anything.
He may.
That's a hot, that's a hot, that'll be great. That's.
That everything's fine, don't worry about it.
All right, so what we've, I think the path forward is to not engage him yet. Joan and I will talk to him and see if we can get a better definition of how many hours he needs. But I certainly didn't want to give him a contract. So the, the only way to work with somebody like that is on an hourly basis.
Although I'd rather have a six hour contract than not have anything.
You may not get what you want, say.
Yeah, but you're kind of setting up a contract.
The contract tells you, say the contract, so expect.
Where, where are we going to deliver it? Because we're going to ask for some deliverables. And if it doesn't suit our needs, we stop.
I'm fine with the contract if we clearly defined the deliverables and how much, and he comes back and says, I need five hours for that. Or I need fifty hours, then we say, no, thanks.
Well, that's, so we'll talk to him the following day. Tell him this is what.
How many hours do you need? Based on what we told you, and we talked to him for about an hour, how many hours do you think you need to give us a, some sense of how to deal with this thing?
That's fine.
Not necessarily a final solution, but where do we need to go?
Right. Is this a problem?
I know, yeah, I know we need to go somewhere.
Is this even a problem?